Heavenly Father, Almighty God, Living and True God, In the name of Thy dear Son Lord Jesus Christ, Comment to Thy holy presence to all our worship, Praise, thanksgiving, adoration, And Lord we exalt you, magnify you, Extol Thy holy name because Thou art our God, Thou art our Creator, the one who has louers with an everlasting love, Worship and praise you because Thou art God who is the most high God, The creator of heaven and the earth, The one who dwells in a high and lofty place who inhabits eternity, Thou art the one who, Lord even the heaven of heavens cannot contain you, Thou art the one who fills the heaven and the earth, Lord worship and praise you, That Lord thy word tells us, Thou art God who dwells in an unapproachable light, Thou art God who dwells in thick darkness, Thou art God who dwells in Zion, in Jerusalem, And today we worship and praise you, Thou art God who dwells in us, You have made us as the temple of the living God, We bless you and praise you Lord for such a great God Who is beyond the creation, beyond the beginnings, Beyond the universe, beyond the sacred page, The one who is the Alpha and Omega, The beginning and the end, the first and the last, The one who is far above all, cheapest of all, fairest of all, And also the Lord of all, We give all glory unto you Lord because Thou art our God, God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, God of Israel, Lord worship and praise you for, Thou art Lord God, Lord that never failing, never changing God, Same yesterday, today and forever, Lord worship and praise you for, Such a God is our God, Lord bless you and praise you for all thy faithfulness That thou art shown unto us so far, Truly your faithfulness is so great, Your mercies are new every morning, Your grace is abundant and abounding, In your favor there is life, Lord we bless you and praise you because of thy joy Which, Lord, is unspeakable and full of glory, And Lord thy peace passes all understanding, Thy way is perfect, ways is in the sea, ways is in the sanctuary, Thy ways are higher than our ways, Thy ways are past finding out, Thy thoughts are very deep, Thy thoughts are very, very precious to each one of us Lord, Thy, Lord, thoughts are innumerable, uncountable Lord, Thy thoughts are so precious, so precious are thy thoughts, Even the way you have created us is a precious thought of thine, The way you have kept us alive is a precious thought of thine, The way you have brought us into the fellowship of God's people, Made us as precious stones, Is a wonderful precious thought of thine, Truly Lord we are least worthy to understand your precious thoughts, Your wonderful plan and purpose, Unimaginable, incomprehensible, Lord we cannot comprehend, Lord how great are thy thoughts toward us, We bless you and praise you but yet in spite of all our weakness, Failures, shortcomings of what we are and how we are Lord, It is purely your grace, your grace alone Which has not only sought us and saved us, Which has, Lord changed the sinner into a saint, You made us, Lord, pass from death unto life, Sin unto salvation and also from, Lord, death unto life, You made us from past, from hell unto heaven, Made us pass from being a child of the devil To become the children of the living and true God, Thank you for that wonderful day we could hear the joyful sound, "My son, my daughter, thy sins are forgiven thee," Lord we thank you and praise you for showing unto us, How Lord that not only you have made us as your children By forgiving our sin and made us as, Lord, a new creation in Christ, We thank and praise you Lord that even thou hast made us Lord Not only as children but hairs of God, Joint hairs with Christ to inherit all things that belong, That belongs to you Lord both in heaven, on earth and also under the earth, Lord we bless you and praise you Lord For such a wonderful privilege to be as the children of God, Thank you for making us as a chosen generation, Royal priests, peculiar people, holy nation Lord, We thank you for making us as, Lord, members in the body of Christ And also as lively stones in the building of God And also partners and partakers with the bride of Christ, We are least worthy Lord to have such a great privilege and honor, It's purely your grace, Thank you and praise you Lord for your faithfulness shown unto us, Lord right from the past so many years, Almost twenty-four years of ministry where the work has started Lord In this place, in this arkipuram, Lord it has been your will, your plan, your goodness, your favor On which Lord thou hast established this testimony Lord, Thank you for that wonderful promise in Revelation 21 verse 5, "Behold I make all things new," Lord has been the foundational promise On which you have built up a new fellowship With new zeal, with new spiritual understanding, With new spiritual focus and spiritual goals Lord And also to exalt our Lord Jesus Christ, To present Christ to the people around and also to various places, To me as a candlestick in this whole area and also to several places, Thank and praise you for down the years, We thank you for all thy servants who could come and minister thy word unto us To encourage, strengthen, build up, save some people, Your word has been given to save some souls, Your word has been given to bring Lord the knowledge of baptism to many souls And also your word has been given, Lord, To even, Lord, strengthen the believers To protect them from false doctrine, false teachings And also we thank you for the, Lord, Safety and security you have kept in this house of God, Thank you for this wonderful facility of this wonderful present situation, Lord building that was given unto us, We give all glory unto you, At this time we thank you and praise you Lord For the way that thou hast blessed thy saints, Multiplied them, prospered them, encouraged them And also met each one their needs, Personal need, family needs, children's need And also Lord so many other needs have been met In and through the fellowship of God's people, Thank you for the wonderful privilege to gather together in, Lord, in apostles' doctrine, fellowship, breaking of bread and in prayers, Steadfastly Lord right from the day one, Thank you for the time of fellowship and love feast And also gatherings together in, Lord, We thank you for the cottage meetings, Thank you for the all-night prayers, the fasting and prayers, The church prayers, Thank you for the time of Bible studies, Thank you for the time of visitings that thou hast given unto us, Thank you for the new souls, thank you for the new people, Lord entering into the fellowship, We thank and praise you for so much you have been doing by your grace And thank you for the volunteers, Thank you for the respond brethren, Thank you for the leadership, Thank and praise you also for the, Lord, Brothers who have been taking active share in the ministry In the house of God and also ministry unto the Lord, Ministry outside also Lord, We thank and praise you for thy goodness, Lord at this time we thank and praise you for this privilege given unto us, Lord to gather together for a time of fellowship Around thy word, around thy presence, Through thy servants whom thou hast chosen for these days of ministry, Lord we thank you for equipping them, We believe that they are going to come In the fullness of thy spirit empty thy servants Especially as we begin this day, We continue to pray for Abraham, We pray for Rider Kumar, for Alan and also for John, Lord empty them, fill them with thy thoughts, with thy words, "I call to thee thy people, Thou release thy word from thine heavenly throne, Throne of God and from the throne of the Lamb As rivers of living water satisfying every needy and longing soul, Every need may be met, every problem solved, Every question, every doubt may be cleared, Every bonds may be broken, every wounds may be healed, Those who are not born again may be convicted by your word, by your spirit, Those who are weak may be strengthened, Those who are backsliding may turn back unto you through these days of ministry, Those who are, Lord, disgraced and deserted Because of some situations personally, family and other issues, Lord they may be encouraged through thy word, And those who are in darkness their eyes may be opened, They may able to come to the light, Those who are deaf Lord are able to hear your voice all these days, Their ears may be open to hear thy still small voice, Those who are hardened souls because of so much of pressure Or so much of, Lord, disturbances and situations, Lord they may be broken and humbled Lord, Those who are proud may be broken and humble in thy presence, "Thus take charge of us, keep us in the center of thy will," Lord we pray, please help us in translation and leading and singing, Playing of instruments, Lord at the same time Lord we also pray for, Lord those who have to come, Thou must bring them with expectation, with hunger, with thirst Lord, So much so Lord, each one may go fully satisfied With the goodness, abundance, fatness and the fullness of thine house Lord, Fill the whole place thy friends thy glory, Cover it under sprinkling of all the precious blood, Also Lord by faith we bring out some of the headship, Kingship and lordship of Lord Jesus Christ, Fully acknowledging without we cannot do anything apart from thee, We are nothing Lord, Thank you for the church prayer you have answered and brought thy servants Lord, Thank you for the faith, thank you for your faithfulness Lord, We have no faith but we thank you for your faithfulness whatsoever We pray whenever whatsoever we ask, You believe you will receive and you shall have them And we have proved your faithfulness in thy word and thy promises, We thank you and praise you, Touch the, Lord, bodies of our brethren who are sharing thy word, Touch them and heal them, restore them, Touch their tired bodies also, Refresh them in a new way, refresh their own souls also Lord, The word may come with power, with authority, liberty, simplicity And also in clarity and Lord satisfy every needy and longing soul Lord, We also pray for the mic system, VA system, live streaming And also we pray for the climate also Lord, Situation also around, no one may be disturbed or harmed or put to difficulty, Likewise Lord we also pray for the, Lord, Sick and needy, thou must cast them and heal them, Those who are unable to attend, thou must grant them their potion And thus take charge of us by faith we enthroned, Lord Jesus Christ, the King of kings and the Lord of lords For three days of ministry, Thy name alone may be glorified, In Jesus' name we rebuke and bind the poor darkness, Claim thy victory, expecting great things from thee, Praying in the blessed name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Part Sangkya, oka thi, song sheets lo, song number one. Evar kana song sheets levante, dai chesi chayju pettandi, miktis postavanta. Song sheet, song, song number one. Vesh chaykandi, veda kene bettkan, malai use chaskulu, i renrola, heroes reyebadki, ide paatlu. Sarvona ta stalam budo devuni ke mahima, Sarvadikari esutim sinuva chekali genu, Sarvadikari esuni sinuva chekali genu, Sarvona thundagu devuni sevakulaiyoodi, Sarvona thundagu devuni sevakulaiyoodi, Sarvona thunichitam buna sarvadasutin chedamu, Sarvona thunichitam buna sarvadasutin chedamu, Paraloka yelushale muna parishutula sangambo, Pariyu chubharta esukai arudenchu chundenu, Moriyu chubharta esukai arudenchu chundenu, Parishuta pathana mandhuna prabhu esukristundu, Parishuta pathana mandhuna prabhu esukristundu, Prakashmala deepamai prajvalenchu chundu, Prakashmala deepamai prajvalenchu chundu, Sarvona ta adambudo devuni ke mahima, Sarvadikari esuni sinuva chekali genu, Sarvadikari esuni sinuva chekali genu, Devuni sevaha sarvamuna devuni mahimano, Suvarakiri thambulam tarinchinam thala, Suvarakiri thambulam tarinchinam thala, Chivulu madhyanundenu devuni ko repilla, Chivu la madhyanundenu devuni ko repilla, Ganata mahimamu vaavum yuga yugamunu vayanake, Ganata mahima prabhamamu yuga yugamunu vayanake, Sarvona ta adambudo devuni ke mahima, Sarvadikari esuni ke mahima, Sarvadikari esuni siluva chekali genu. Sarvadikari esuni siluva chekali genu. Eharayu shiva jalanadi. Patthana puvidhulano prabhinchu chundenu. Patthana puvidhulano prabhinchu chundenu. Patika ampunanikirupachala jiva phalabrukshambu. Patika ampunanikirupachala jiva phalabrukshambu. Swastata kaligichu rukshambu ta puru. Swastata kaligichu rukshambu ta puru. Sarvona ta stalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluva chekali genu. Sarvadikari esuni siluva chekali genu. Patthalo nuunni niiti kaalvala needu gatta pechenu. Mendaina nadhula neelenu tandiga parichenu. Mendaina nadhula neelenu tandiga parichenu. Pandaina kristunichilchenu prabhu devundee manaku. Pandaina kristunuchilchenu prabhu devundee manaku. Tendara nimpona atmanu tandri vede yudan. Tendara nimpona atmanu tandri vede yudan. Sarvona ta stalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Tendala stam bandhulam nadhula para jethu. Putala renno loyala nohukun kathu. Putala renno loyala nohukun kathu. Niiti madhuga macheda naranyampona satini. Niiti madhuga macheda naranyampona satini. Niiti mukaluga jethu ten dina nela. Niiti mukaluga jethu ten dina nela. Sarvona ta stalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Davidu patthana mandhuram davidu santatilo. Devuni sarva shaktito chenminche esundu. Devuni sarva shaktito chenminche esundu. Davidu taalamu kaligi tanasevaha sana bandhu. Davidu taalamu kaligi tanasevaha sana bandhu. Davichichchu khonunu chaichu varini. Davichichchu khonunu chaichu varini. Sarvona ta stalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Siltvalo marani chelusip esuna koraku. Viluvaina rakta mukkachenu malinambo po godan. Viluvaina rakta mukkachenu malinambo po godan. Maludaini naatva shaktito keliche samathini. Maludaini naatva shaktito keliche samathini. Paname chunu parishutulaku hallelujah paadehbu. Paname chunu parishutulaku hallelujah paadehbu. Sarvona ta stalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Sarvadikari esu siluva chekali genu. Song number three. One more song. Sing song number three. Two songs. Song number two. First, we will sing the first song. First, we will sing the first song. Song number two. First, we will sing the first song.
Neeli gaganana velige tarana. Holilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Ohhulaparimalam pulallam tootalo vyapinchu naatnuga. Ohhulaparimalam pulallam tootalo vyapinchu chunugam. Ohhika tooda lokamunane tootalo parimanam nimpurum. Ohhika tooda lokamanedi tootalo parimanam nimpurum. Neeli gaganana velige tarana. Holilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadudam.
Sing. 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 Two years ago, two times, two times, big group. Next.
Velige tarana holilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Ohhulaparimalam pulallam tootalo vyapinchu naatnuga. Ohhulaparimalam pulallam tootalo vyapinchu naatnuga. Ohhika tooda lokamanedi tootalo parimanam nimpurum. Ohhika tooda lokamanedi tootalo parimanam nimpurum. Neeli gaganana velige tarana. Holilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu paktulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Chandra suryulum prakashamivam andhakaramo maayamau. Chandra suryulum prakashamivam andhakaramo maayamau. Needu jivita pejambu velgun paapandhakaramu po gunu. Needu jivita pejambu velgun paapandhakaramu po gunu. Neeli gaganana velige tarana. Holilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Deepamuna taiyamukalam. Deepamunandhuna vittu mandhum. Deepamuna taiyamugandhukalam. Deepamunandhuna makkimandhum. Neerulilona jivinchu kalam vyapimpajyu moesunamam. Neerulilona jivinchu kalam vyapimpajyu moesunamam. Neeli gaganana velige tarana. Holilo kana velugudam. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham. Madura swarampu pakshulaboli esunake stuti paadeham.
Sing.
Esuni vaakho thitya monal. Evi varina ulu po du. Ubi akasham katichina. Para ju pathu ku maradu. Toora ke vaideh nahitale. Jo kuchh mege re re rehenge. Agar kuchh chahe aasman ke taar. To biye vaideh rehenge. Please Lord. Yeah.
Shall we pray?
Radhan chesku naavu.
Our loving heavenly father, our hearts are grateful lord for bringing us to your house this morning.
Ma prema galaparalu kooputhanri. Mamunee vidanga, yudhey kaalam, meyokasani, dlonik teesu chunndikei. Ma furdayumlu, ento kurthakne to nindi unnai.
We thank you that you are our god, our savior and our lord.
Deva, neevo ma devu devu, ma raksha ku devu, ma prabhu devay unnavu.
Thank you for revealing yourself to us through your eternal word.
Nee nethimayina vaakkucheta, neenu neeve, maaku bailu paruchukunndikei, meeku vandana mulu.
Thank you for the revelation of the lord jesus christ who revealed that only true god to us.
Ah, eka eka satyadevunni maaku pratteksha parichina, bailu parichina. Yesu krishna prabhu varanu, bhattu meeku vandana mulu.
We thank you lord for the holy spirit that you have given to every believer to indwell us.
Maaloo, niwasinchunatlu, meero maakannukreinchu, parashuddha atma, devunnu bhattu meeku vandana mulu.
We also worship you lord for every time that you give to us to come around your word.
Ne vaakkuchutu, meem chere raavadaniki, meero maakannukreisthunna, prati avakashamunnu bhattu meeku vandana mulu.
Help us lord this morning that it will not be a routine kind of thing for us. But it would be a reality of spending in your presence.
Yudhey kaalamo, yuvidanga, meem chere vaachuta, maaku okka alavatut choppuna, anikhaakunda. Nijamga, ento vastavikamga, meyoka vaakyani, meem erugunatlu, maaku sahayam cheni.
Speak to us and transform us through your, through the power of your word.
Ne vaakkulu unnashakti cheta, maato maatlaadumo, mamunu marchumo.
Give us the spirit of revelation of the lord jesus christ.
Yesu krishna prabhu varanu gurichina, prattekshata, bailu paripu, maaku dai cheyum.
Help us to be drawn closer to you.
Neeku sammeepanga vaachutaku sahayam cheni.
Strengthened in the inner man.
Deva, maaloo, unnantranga purushune balaparichumo.
And grow in the grace and in the knowledge of the lord jesus christ.
Yesu krishna prabhu variyoka, krupayandu, gnanamunandu, edhi abhrudichundu, sahayapadumo.
Be conformed into the image of the lord jesus christ.
Yesu krishna ruupamlo, neeki marchabattu, sahayapadumo.
Father, we do pray as we plead with you that you will bless us through your word.
Ne vaakkucheta, mamunu divinchu, manu praradhisthunnamu thanri.
Enrich us and enlighten us.
Mamalnee, aatmyanga, aashiravadinchandi, mamalnee entaga, no gopchani.
And all those things that are not of you may be driven away, may be cast away.
Ne valana kaanivannu, me manu teesiveendi.
And we pray lord that you will make this time very precious to us, glorifying to you and a blessing to us.
Isamayamu, maakentho, precious thamaayinadiga, aashiravada karamga, meekentho mahima karadiga, cheymanu praradhisthunnamu.
Because we ask all this with thanksgiving in jesus precious and powerful name.
Kurthakne tal, chelli, yesu krishna prabhu var, precious thamaayina shakti galina, namu, lo praradinchu vedukuntunnamu thanri.
Amen. I'm glad to be here once again.
Yudhey kaalam, yuvidanga, me madhilo unnadu, naakentho santoshanga undi.
And thankful to the lord for the opportunity given to, uh, to us and our team by the brothers from the assembly here.
Ikadu naasangamo, marinaayakattumo, manaki yuvidanga, itavakashan kalipinchunnduku, kuda ayentho santoshamo.
As I am in the midst of people who do not look at watchers. So I feel lot of freedom to be standing in front of you.
Mar me madhilo nilabaddu, naakentho santoshu, endu kante, meero maatu maatiki, gadiyaraalu, chusukunna, rakam kadu.
It's good to have such people.
Alaa antu, valu unnadu, ayentho avasaram.
And also to, and see people who have hunger for god's word.
Devu ne vaakyanku, reka, ento aakali kaligunatlu, antu valu.
As you, I, I would like you to turn to book of mark, mark gospel chapter eight.
Dai chesichu, randi markusvartha, enemida vaadhyaayum.
And we should look into this in two different parts.
Rendu bhagalu ga, manamey vaakyani chusukunnaavu.
And in the later part, when we come back from the break, I would like to share with you some of the practical applications. How we all need to be, uh, studying the word of god.
Marie, manavu rendu bhagalu, madhutubhagun taravata, kuncha viramam untundi. Viraman taravata, yuvaakyunlo, yevidanga vaakyani, dyaninchale, anekoni, mari, manamo, practicalga, anta, abhyasinchutaku, veelaina, vishyalu, manu chusukundu.
In the first part, we are going to look into a passage of the scripture in chapter eight, probably, uh, bit of difficulty to understand many, in many ways.
Mar markusvartha, enemida vaadhyaayu, madhutubhagunlo, ardancheskunduku, kuncha ibandiga, undi, antu, vaakyabhaagani, manu dyaninchubhotunnamu.
You may get questions like, why did jesus, uh, did not heal instantaneously?
Entu kani, yesu krishna prabhu, unnapattuka, mari swastaparchaliv.
Why is that disciples before knowing all that they should know, yet they were chosen as the disciples?
Mari variki, telavalsinanta, telavakapoina, kuda, alaa antu, valanis, shishulana, yesu krishna prabhu, entu kani, ennukunnadu?
And there are certain questions that would come from this passage. That may probably, god will only answer to us, answer us through his word.
Mari kuni, pressnalu, manaku, sthundu, chadu, napudu, devu devu, tanavaakyandu vara, vaatni, manaki, parishkaristad.
So as we look into this passage, verses twenty-two through the end of the chapter.
Dai chesichu, randi markusvartha, enemida vaadhyaayu, meero, rando, ochunnu, nundu, mugimpu varuku.
And today, we having a bible study time.
Maridu, manaku, bible dyanasamayumo.
I would like you to understand little bit more about the study part.
Kaavati, dini dyaninchay, vidhanamunu, meero, bhaga ardancheskvalani, naasha.
Now, we all know that mark has written the gospel.
Mar markani vikti, yoka suvartha, nu rajinchad.
But the bible says that it is, uh, uh, the, the word is given to us through the prophets and the apostles.
Aite, vaakyam selevisundega, da devu ne vaakyamo, pravaktala dvara, manakandinchabaddindi.
As you keep a finger in book of mark chapter eight, we will turn to ephesians chapter three.
Chudandi, ephesiala, krasna, patrika, muda vaadhyaayumo.
Anybody who gets can read verse five.
Muda vaadhyaayumo, ido vachnum, chudandi.
Now, this will show to us, how did we receive the scriptures?
Yevidanga, lekanamalu, manakannukreinchabaddaayo, avaakyanlo, vivaristunadu.
Ephesians chapter three, verse five.
Ephesimooda vaadhyaayum, ido vachnumo. Ee marmamipudu, atma mulamuga, devu ne parashuddhalagu, apostulakunu, pravaktalakunu, bailu parichabadiyunattuga. Purokaalamandu, manusilaku, telea parichabaddalaidu.
Now, god has given to us his word through apostles and the prophet, that's what it says.
Ikadu, manak chappavadutundi, apostulakunu, pravaktalakunu, devu du, tanatma mulanga, yippudu, bailu parichadu.
Now, brothers and sisters, why do we have to believe that it is god who has given to us this word?
Kaavati, vaakyamo, devu dechnavaakyam, ani, manu, endukunnam, maali.
Come with me to second peter.
Chudandi, pethuru, rasina, rendu patrika.
Chapter one.
Madhutu vaadhyaayumo.
What's twenty and twenty-one?
Irvaayi, irvaayukati.
These are important scripture references that talk about the scriptures being given to us.
Mari, yevidanga, lekanam, manakannukreinchabaddindi, ikkada, chaptu unnadu.
If anybody should come to you and ask this question, how do you know that the bible is the word of god?
Evra, nami, daggerkochi, bible le, devu ne vaakyamo, ani, me kelaajetelisuvan, antu.
Or in your personal study, in your personal quiet time, when you, when you have this question, how do I know this is the word of god?
Ponni saralu, manaki, annipinchuchu, ide, devu ne satyavaakyam, ani, enti, ruju, ani.
Now, here is the answer.
Apudikada, jawab chudandi.
What's twenty and twenty-one?
Irvaayi, irvaayukati, rendu pethuru, madhutu vaadhyaayumo. Okadu, tanau, uha, bhatti, chapputavalanu, lekanamalu, yeh pravachnumunu, puttadanu, madhutu, grahinchukunnavalenu. Elia, naaga, pravachnumu, yippudu, no, manusini, ichchunbattu, kaligalaidu, kani, manusilu, parashuddha atma, valana, prayer, epimpabaddinavari, devu ne mulamuga, palakiri.
It's so, it says so clearly, but no prophecy is, uh, ever given to us by any human ways.
Ikkada, ento, chakka, vivarinchabaddindi, antunnadu, manusilu, sama, mari, uha, valana, uhinchi, kalipinchavalanu, devu devu, yeh vaakyanu, guda, manaki, valaidu.
It is the work of the holy spirit.
Kevalamu, parashuddha atma, ni, karyamvalanu, ne vaakyam ochindi.
Then come with me to chap, first peter, chapter one.
Chudandi, pethuru, madhutu patrika, madhutu vaadhyaayum.
Then what's ten?
Padavachnum.
Chapter one, verse ten.
Chudandi, madhutu pethuru, madhutu vaadhyaayum.
And also, verse eleven, we shall all read together.
Manaku, telugalo, padipadukunnu, kalisi unnai.
We'll all read together.
Kalisi vaakyin chadukunnaavu, randi, meeku kalugu, aakrupanugu ochi, kalisi. Pravachinchina pravaktalu, ee rakshinana, gurichu, parishilinchu, tamayendu, na, krishnu atma, krishnu vishyamayanasramalanu, gurichyu. Vaadi taravata, kaligavu, mahimalanu, gurichyu, mundiga, sakshmi chinappudu, aatma, yeh kaalamunu, etu kaalamunu, soochinchu, vachino, dani, vichariinchi, parishodinchiri.
Now, these two verses are specifically referring to the gospel.
Ee rendu vachinalu, kuda, nirdishthanga, suvartha, gurinchu, soochistunai.
Now, who did, who wrote the gospels here?
Suvartha, yeh, varu rajincharu.
It says very clearly, the prophets.
Pravaktalu rajincharu.
The old testament prophets.
Pathani bandhana kaalamlo, unnapravaktalu.
That means you and I would know that old testament prophets also knew the gospel.
Ante, pathani bandhana kaalamlo, unnapravaktalaku, kuda, suvartha, telesu.
Now, what gospel do they know?
Aite, yesuvartha, varu, erugudu.
We have only one gospel.
Varu, ge, telesina, suvartha, kudde.
And if there is any other gospel that would be preached to us, paul, the apostle says, don't believe that.
Mar paula apostul, antunnadu, ee suvartha, kaka, mari, evra, inavachi, mari, suvartha, ina, meeku, vivariste, dani, namodu.
So, who preached the gospel?
Suvartha, varu pragadincharu.
Even the old testament prophets.
Pathani bandhana, lo, unnat, antu, pravakta, la, sayidamu.
And when we come to the new testament, we have the disciples of the lord jesus christ preaching the gospel.
Yesu krishna, shishulaina, apostulakunu, manakunnaru.
Then we see the early church preaching the gospel.
Anta kado, aaramba kaalamlo, unnasangamo, suvartha, nu pragadinchindi.
What gospel?
Yesuvartha.
There is only one gospel.
Ok, yesuvartha.
And is, that is the gospel of the lord jesus christ.
Yesu krishna prabhu, varis, suvartha.
And paul, the apostle mentions very clearly to corinthians.
Apostul, dena, paulu, corinthi, lo, unnavisvasalakentho, spashtranga, telejeseidu.
About the gospel.
Suvartha, gurinchu.
That jesus died according to the scriptures, buried and rose again from the dead.
Antadu, kada, lekanamalu, prakarame, krishnu, srmapadi, siluavam, eda, mari, maraninchu, pathi, petta, badi, lekanamalu, prakarame, tirigilechadu.
And so now, we are talking about that gospel.
A suvartha, gurinchu, manam, maatlaadutunnamu.
And when the lord jesus was on this earth.
Yesu krishna prabhu, sherirada, riga, bumidunnapudu.
He wanted his disciples to know the proper understanding of the gospel.
Suvartha, no, tanasishalu, chakka, grahinchalani, tanukoradu.
In fact, the, this book actually begins with the, uh, with mentioning about the gospel.
Mari, markusvartha, manan chusti, aaramame, suvartha, to aaramaavutundi.
Mark chapter one, verse one.
Chudandi, madhutu, madhutu vaachnum, markusvartha.
The beginning of the gospel of jesus christ, the son of god.
Marku, vakadi, vakadi, devu ne kumaradani, yesu krishna, suvartha, prarambhamu.
Brothers and sisters, this is the gospel that you and I need to understand properly.
Prema, na sahodara, sahodari, manam, grahinchavalisinu, suvartha, ide.
But when we come to chapter eight, here.
Markusvartha, enemida vaadhyaayinku, sti.
It is very clearly seen that the disciples did not understand the gospel.
Shishalu, suvartha, nu, sariga, grahinchalaidu, ani, chustunnamu.
So we are going to read this portion in a short while.
Abadi, kodisamayalu, manamey vaakyal, chadukunnamu.
But before we begin that.
Dani kante, mundu.
We have already seen, it is the apostles and the prophets who gave the word of god.
Manu, indak, chadukunattu, apostulakunu, pravaktalakunu, devu devu, dini, bailu parichadu.
When we are talking about the word of god, we are talking about specifically about sixty-six books of the bible.
Devu ne vaakyam, ani, manam, annapudu, bible grandalu, unnarvayaru, pushtakala, gurinchu, manam, maatlaadutunnamu.
Now, there is no other revelation of, uh, of the word apart from this sixty-six books.
Mari, arvayaru, pushtakala, sammealananga, unnabible, grandamutappa, marekada, kuda, devu neyoka, vaakyam, anninchabaddalaidu.
There is no book in the whole world that is called as the word of god.
Devu ne vaakyam, annipilobadu, grandam, mari, edi, ledu.
And we know that it has taken sixteen hundred years, it must be a very big project to bring god's word to, into our hands.
Devu neyoka, vaakyam, yuvidanga, sampurnanga, manacheetalu, raavadaniki, rajinchutaku, vada, baddina, kaalamo, padahar, vandala, savachalante, enta, pitta, projectu, chudandi.
When forty people have written the word of god.
Daadaapuka, ee, padahar, shatabdaaloo, nalabay mandi, bayga, adini, rajinchadu.
It has definitely been a, you know, very big project.
Chala, pitta, pani, di.
And that has given to us.
Adi, manaku, anninchabaddindi.
Now, when we talk about mark and also luke.
Marku, luke, alanu, gurichu, manan, chuchinappudu.
Now, these two people are not in the list of apostles.
Veelu, apostul, lo, pilobaddu, valu, kadu.
But we have seen in the scripture, that it is god has given to us the word through apostles and the prophets.
Aina, kuda, vaakyanlo, aite, manan, sahutunnamu, devu du, tanasuartha, gurichina, marmamu, no, apostulakunu, pravaktalakunu, dai cheseidu.
So, this question must be settled in our minds.
Abadi, manaku, unnai, yeh, pressna, mari, adi, teetsabaddali.
Then we'll go into chapter eight, reading from verse twenty-two.
Apudu, enemida vaadhyaayu, meero, rando, manan, sahutam.
Mark spent such a quality time with apostle like peter.
Mari, markanet, antu, yeh, vikti, apostul, dena, pethuru, to, chala, kaalam, gadipadu.
And luke spent so much of quality time with apostle, uh, p, paul.
Mari, alage, luka, aynapostul, dena, paulu, to, bahukalam, gadipadu.
And they were in this kind of leadership.
Vali, naayakattu, kinnu, undu, vachchadu.
And god used these two men also to write the scriptures.
Kaavati, varu, mulanga, yereena, sangatalu, raaitaku, garu, marku, luka, vattu, varnu, kuda, devu, vaadukunnadu.
None of the men are inspired, but the word is inspired.
Mari, manusilu, kadi, kadi, devu ne vaakyam, e, naava, vesam, valana, mari, adi, kaligindi.
Men were led by the holy spirit to write the scriptures.
Kevalamu, manalu, devu ne atma cheta, parashuddha atma cheta, nadipinchavadutuvachadu.
So, we have the answer that mark spent quality time with peter, so he was able to write this, the, the whole gospel.
Marku, ee suvartha, nu, rasad, rende, karanamu, ee satyavaakkulani, kuda, tanu, pethur, valana, pondinavi.
Now, we'll begin from verse twenty-two.
Rendu, markusvartha, enemida vaadhyaayu, meero, rando, nundu, chadukunnamu.
We will observe a, uh, healing that has taken place.
Ikka, okka, swastatanu, gurinchunatlu, antu, sangatinu, manan, sahutam.
And it is very much different from other healings.
Vary swastatalaku, dini, kpoilishunappudu, edi, binanga, untundi.
Not because he was a blind man.
Anta, edi, guduvaranu, kadi, kani.
But the healing has taken place in two phases.
Aite, rendu, dasyalaga, ikkada, swastata, kaligindi.
Now, don't think that the power of jesus christ was not so powerful at that time, that he had to, uh, do this performance or do the healing two times.
Ee pratyakamayina, swastata, karyamu, rendu, dasyalaga, entu, geeseidu, oksaari, chaitaku, prabavam, saripoleeda, mari, radu.
Why is that concept wrong?
Entu, kuda, adi, tappante.
To underestimate the power of god?
Devu neyoka, la, krishi, yoka, shakti, ni, manam, annamaniinchale.
When we come back, uh, the, in the second part after the break, we will look into that.
Mari, entu, kuda, adi, tapponi, ilu, rendu, bhagalu, meeku, vivaristadu.
Now, verses twenty-two through thirty-eight, we'll read alternately.
Dai chesirandu, markusvartha, enemida vaadhyaayum.
The first thing.
Irvaayi, rendu, nundu, mupay, enemida, varu, march, march, chadukunnamu.
The first thing that you and I need to know when trying to understand the scriptures is observance.
Devu ne vaakyin chadu, vettappu, manakundavalsina, motta, madhutu, lakshana, mo, akada, yemi, jarugutunda, gamaninchay, manasundali.
So let our hearts and minds be so attentive that we'll observe what god is telling us in this passage.
Abadi, manafurdayalu, manam, manasu, eka, aagra, tantskoni, sahutunna, lekanabaga, manam, gamanidhavu, randi. Irvaayi, rendu, nindu, sahutunnamu, antalo, varu, betsaida, aku, vachri, apudu, akada, varu, ayni, yodaku, okka, gudubani, thodu, kuni, vachi, vaani, muttavalanu, aynanu, vedukoniri.
I see.
I see.
I see.
Vaadu, meedhachitulipu, nekemayana, kana, baduchunada, anju, vaadu, nadu. Vaadu, kanulethi, manusilu, nak, kana, baduchunaru, varu, chetlavalanu, nundu, narichuchunatlu, gana, kana, baduchunara, nenu. Anta da, aynam, maralatana, chesalu, vaadu, kanu, meri, chudadu, vaadu, thirichuchu, kuduchabadi, samastamunati, eda, gachu, dhara. Apudu, yesu, nee, uriloni, ke, velavatani, vaani, chepi, vaani, inti, vaani, pumpi, veseeno. Yes, tanasishalu, to, philipu, dena, kaissari, antu, chedina, graamamu, laku, bailu, veri, markamalu, undaga, nee, evadu, nani, jenalu, chappukchunara, nani, tanasishalani, nadigenu. Andu, kvaru, kondaru, bhaktismi, mitchi, yohana, ani, you, kondaru, elia, ani, you, mari, kondaru, pravaktalu, vakkadu, ani, you, chappukonuchunara, niri.
And he continued by questioning them, but, do you say, that I have, peter answered, said to him, you are the christ.
Apudu, tanu, gurichna, ee, sangati, yebanu, tu, chappavadani, aynavarki, kandita, muka, chappeno. Mari, manusipu, maru, nek, himsulupudi, pitta, chedu, pradanaya, chedu, shastru, chedu, upechipabadi, champa, badi. Muddinamalaina, taravata, lechuda, agat, many, aynavarki, bodimpa, naarambinchadu. Ayni, ee, maata, behirangam, gach, chappeno, pethuru, ayni, chipattukoni, aynanu, gaddimpa, sageno. Andu, kainatana, shishalu, vayip, tirigivadu, sata, na, venakukupu. Ne, manusila, sangatalu, manaskarinchunavu, kani, devu ne sangatalu, manaskarimpakunnavu, pethuru, gaddinchu. Anta da, aynatana, shishalano, jana, samohamanu, tanayodaku, pelichi, nanu, vembadimpakoravu, vaadu, tanu, tanu, upechinchukoni, tanasilvanu, yetukoni, nanu, vembadimpavale, no. Tanapranamnu, rakshinchukunavu, varu, vaadu, tanapoguttukunavu, nani, mitthu, suvartha, nu, tanapranamnu, poguttukunavu, varu, tanarakshinchukunavu. Okadu, sarvalokam, sanpaadinchukunna, tanapranamnu, poguttukunata, vaanikemi, prayojnamu. Manusilu, tanapranamnu, prathiga, yemi, yagalagalu. Vicharamu, papa, mu, cheyuu, ee, taramu, varu, lo, nu, varu, lo, nanu, gurichu, na, maatalanu, gurichu, siggu, padu, vaadu, evadu. Vebecharanu paapamuchayu, ee taramo varilonna, varilo, nanugurchiyuna maatalanugurchiusigupaduvaru, ebudo, vaaninugurchi manusukumaru, tanatandri mahima galada, vaadai, parashuddha duthalato kuda vachinappudu, sigupadu nani chepeno.
Our Lord saw such a great need of teaching about the Gospel to his disciples.
Tanasishulaku swarthasatyamunu vivarinchavalisinagoppa, avasana tanakada prabhu juchadu.
Did you notice that even the disciples needed a rebuke?
Choodandi shishulaku saithamu gadimpu avasramayudhadi.
And even disciples did not understand properly the Gospel?
Shishulu kuda swarthano sariga marmamugrahinchalekupayalu.
Interestingly, they were still chosen as disciples, even though they did not have complete understanding.
Aina kuda aashiramimitante, varine tanukshishulana yesu krissu prabhu enukunnadu.
Some of these questions will be answered as we go in, dive into the scripture.
Manavakyaloki inkai kolauduka veltenukodivitini manavardanjesukuntam.
So the title of today's message would be like this.
Ee dinamayoka vakyadhyanamayoka amshamayemitante.
Proclaiming the Gospel is not the priority, but knowing it in clarity.
Swarthaprakadinchuta, kante kuda pradanyamena deendante, swarthanugrahinchuta.
If you do not know the Gospel properly, then you cannot preach the Gospel properly.
Indukantey swarthanumanamespashtranga grahinchakapothi, manamu tapugardanjesukuntamu, tapune swarthaga prakadistam.
So proclaiming the Gospel is not the priority, but knowing it in clarity.
Kaabate swarthanuprakadinchutakante kuda swarthanuspashthamuka grahinchutayee prapradamayina sangati.
That means know the Gospel with clarity and only then proclaim it.
Avante, diini inkomaro maatla chappalante, swarthanumundega spashtranga erugu, a tarvata swarthanuprakadinchu.
Now, Mark chapter 8 verse twenty-two to thirty-eight is an important text that focuses, that focus our attention to see what we should see the way we should see.
Markus swarthaa, envidavadya imiruverunundu churvaruku manansadukunna ee vakyabagalu, mananchoochesangatulannu yekonamulochudavallu ikada vivarinchabadindi.
The lack of understanding of the Gospel in the context would bring, you know, shallowness in our spiritual life.
Mari ikada manavi sandarbala juste, swarthanumanamasariga grahinchakapodavalanu, mana jivitanlo kuda lotuleni stithi, meeda meedugane undesstithini manam gamanistam.
And we will not be preaching the Gospel to people.
Appudu prajalekmanas swarthanosariga punchkollemu.
The problem with many people is the shallowness of understanding.
Mari chala mandukunna samasayemitante, ee swarthamarmamunu meeda meedugana ardhanjesukuntam.
Or the lack of understanding.
Ande sampurnamuka grahincharu.
Now there was a little kid, probably I told this earlier.
Mari thamundukudachepanemo, marokasangatuka chinnapilavadu ndevadu.
You know, he saw pile up apples on one side.
Okavaiipu juste, mari apples anta kuda akada kuppaavunayi.
And on the table, on the other side, he has, they kept chocolates.
Marovaiipemo chocolates bettaru.
And in front of the table, it was written.
Table meeda ee vidanga raspettaru.
You know, God is watching the apples take only one.
Mari devudu chustunnadu kanuka.
God is watching, take only one, that was written there.
Akadaya manarasundan, devudu chustunnadu, kanuka okadeteeskavaleno, andarasundi.
And a smart guy came, boy came.
Mar achinapilavadu kudochadu.
And he stuck another, you know, label near the chocolates.
Akada rasundattu twandi, aadani pakana chocolates agara, aynasontangokamart raspettedu.
He wrote like this.
Yevanrasadu.
You know, God is watching apples, take chocolates as many as you want.
Mari yevanrasadante, devudu chustunnadu, kaabate apples okadi thieskundi, chocolates meekanachinani thieskundi, and raspettedu.
Why did he say that?
Indukala rasadu.
Lack of understanding or smartness of his brain.
Ande ikadrendu sangatulu, dani sariga grahinchaleedanna, grahinchaleedu deendate, telivinik pradashinchadu.
There are a lot of preachers who have, with their smartness of their brain, they want to earn money, so they would like to manipulate with the Gospel.
Chala mandi ee dinamo swarthaprakadinchu varu kuda, varu tamabburu nupeyoginchii, tamatelivini prakadinchukoda, aniki swarthanu vakrikarinchii, vala vidanga prakadistutadu.
We have false prophets who have been commercializing the Gospel.
Mari swarthano, okavyaaparanga machvesetu twandi varu kuda unnar.
Now that is not the kind of Gospel that we see in God's Word.
Devuni vakyalolo alantus swarthayeppudu chappaballedu.
We have no right to proclaim it unless we study the Gospel.
Swarthanumanamaspashtranga grahinchidhyanistene, kani dani prakadinchehakumanakaledu.
So please look into the text.
Kaabadi daichesi ikada vakyabagalu choodandi.
First of all, it talks about a blind man receiving sight in two phases.
Ikada justako vektunnadu, guduvadu, chupupundadu, kani rendu dashalavaari ga chupochinadu.
Now let us be very clear about it, the healing doesn't take place instantaneously.
Ikada swastata ventane jaragaledi vektiki.
Then we see in the scripture here that disciples did not understand.
Ikada shishulu kuda swarthanusariga grahinchaleedha sangatini.
Who Christ is.
Krissu yavaru.
And the text concludes with an excellent teaching about following the Lord Jesus Christ.
Mari yoka adhyay mugimpalo juste, entothakaga, krissanuvembadinchutana gurichna sangatulichappabadi, adhyay muginchukuntundi.
First of all, it talks about the blind man receiving sight in two phases.
Madhadi ganimo guduvadu, chupu, rendu dashalopondukunnadu.
Then it talks about the disciples who did not understand the Gospel.
A tarvata shishulu, abari sangati swarthavarkisariga ardankalidu.
And then the text concludes with an excellent teaching on the Gospel.
Chivariga, mari entothakaga, ee swarthanugurinchinattu twandi, vivarana, krissanuvembadinchutala, sangatana akadiviarinchadu.
Get into this scripture and to understand this passage, we will see three aspects.
Ikada manamorusangatulichusukuntamo.
Number one, illustration used for seeing Jesus Christ.
Krissanuchuchutakorakai, ikada ko udaharana vaadabadiindi.
Now this healing that has taken place is actually used as an illustration.
Ikada guduvadu chadu, vaani swasta parichay praakrielo, a sandarbana vaadukunnadu, krissu yavaru anedu varikprakadinchadu.
It is definitely a healing.
Idi nishyenga okaswastata karyame.
But it is, it is an illustration also that the Lord Jesus Christ used it.
Adesamyalo mari dani vaadukunnadu prabhu, variki swarthanugurinchii, tananugurinchiprakadinchutaku.
Secondly, we see the introduction of Jesus to see Him as Christ.
Antegaadu yesu krissu prabhu, aynakristayunnadu, ani, a konamlo aynaparchenjaskuna sangatigudi kudundu.
Thirdly, instruction about following the Lord Jesus Christ refers to the cross.
Yesu krissanuvembadinchutala, souchana, and yela vembadinchali, silvani yetukona neetvundu okasouchana.
The text is Mark chapter 8.
Markus swarthainimidavadya.
Verse twenty-two to thirty-eight.
Irue rendu nundee muppaenmivaruku.
And there is a beautiful illustration, that's how we will begin now.
Mundugane mo, mari ani moru English lo aithune unnaayi, madhadi illustration, leda udaharana.
Illustration used for Jesus, for seeing Jesus clearly.
Krissanuspashthamuka chuchutakorakai, okagudaharana.
When you and I cannot see Jesus clearly.
Yesu krissanumanaspashthamuka chudanappudu.
Here is a warning to us, we need to see the Lord Jesus Christ clearly in clarity.
Ikada ka hetcharika manakundhi, manavani, mari spashtranga chudali.
Before, you know, knowing Peter's confession about Christ.
Krissanugurinchii, peethuru tanaku delisindichappakamundu.
No, we have this illustration about healing.
Ee udaharana paynamanakundhi, ee swastatanugurinchii.
You know, when the Lord asked, you know, how, what are people thinking about me?
Prabhu adigedu, prajaluna gurincheyevanukuntunnaru.
What is the introduction about me?
Na gurinchivalakunnatu, abiprayam enti.
And immediately Peter says, you are the Christ.
Appudu peethurantada, ya, ni ukrissu.
Did Jesus applaud that answer?
Mari a sangatini prabhu mechkunadu.
Or is it wrong answer?
Leeda adi tappuda aajavaba.
No, according to the scripture, it is not a wrong answer.
Lekananusaranga juste, adi emi tapugadu.
Then we need to see why this whole thing happened, that the Lord has to bring the message of the Gospel here.
Aithey indukani marakada swarthanugurinchiprabhu, vari vektikatanga choruvadisikona akadiviarinchalasuchidhi.
When we think about the two phases of the healing.
Ee guduvani choodandi, tanakswastata rendu levelslo jariindi.
We are not talking about the second blessing that many people talk about today.
Mari chala mandi rendantala aashirvadamantharu, dhanugurinchikadu manam maatladu.
Or people would think wrongly that it is the inadequacy of Jesus' healing immediately.
Leeda ventaneswasta parichutaku kavalsina shakti koravadina karanamucheta.
But we see.
Krissu, marala arrendu saari vaanubabu jeseedanukundaranukuntaru.
But we see God's explicit purpose that is revealed here as we enter into this text.
Kani vakyanmanasadunappudu manangrahinchakalamu, devudu kavalene, manaku okasatyanine airpinchutakorake, entho udeshapurukanga swastatala jariinchadu.
Failing to understand that this particular healing is used as an illustration, if we fail to understand that, we are missing the point.
Mari ikada okagudaharana chupinchutakorake, prabhu i vektini, okasari gaakunda, time thieskoni, madhada, mari katanukunchanju seadu, tarvata mottanju seadu, na sangatina manangrahinchakapothi, prabhu chappalanukuna marmanu manangrahinchalemu.
So right now, the text before us is verses twenty-two through twenty-six.
Mari mundugachoodandi madhadi baganga, irue rendu nundee irvayaru vachnaru.
As you keep that in front of you.
Mar abichoodandi.
The incident is an illustration.
Akada jariina sangatane okagudaharana.
Blind person is brought to Jesus in Betzaida.
Betzaidaana graamolo guduvani thieskochadu.
The boat journey that is mentioned here in the same chapter in verses thirteen and fourteen.
Padamodu patnalu lo juste, valu donelo adarkillaru.
Look into verse thirteen, the beginning words.
Choodandi varu, viddichimarala donayekki adarkipoyenu.
Leaving them.
Varini viddichu.
He comes to a different place.
Maro chodukochadu.
Now that's how the purpose is revealed about the movements of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ikada prabhu yoka kadalekale mananjuste, kavalene, aalochina jese, tanu varini viddichichodukochadu.
What kind of place is he leaving?
Ee pradeshani viddichadu.
He is leaving the place of legalists, verse eleven.
Padukunavachunadu choodandi, antada aparisailavacha aynan shodinchuchu annundante, parisailavariite, mari nagitikata, neatisouchana, padthati, sampradayanugurichmaatladutado, varu viddichadu.
The Lord's movement should be engineered in this way, that he must be present at the place where the blind man would be brought.
Akada unnapude, guduvad ekadaitethieskonrabartunadu, akadigivellaaliyana sangati, prabhu mari aalochinjaysadu.
And as the scripture says, it is people who brought him to the Lord.
Mar akadajuste, prajalaya guduvani aynagradigadichar.
What an insightful thought here.
Ikada choodandi entha aalochina jesaralu.
That people play a wonderful role in, you know, bringing one person to the Lord.
Ikada manaku manchi aalochina okatalampu choodandi, krissiyodaku, okavektinevaridestharante, prajaleidesthar.
That's how the church is built up.
A vidanga sangamu katabadutundi.
As we read into the scriptures.
Manu vakyani sadutunundanga.
The scripture saturates our hearts.
Vakyammanafurudayani nimputundi.
The scripture, you know, motivates our hearts.
Vakyammanafurudayani prayrepistundi.
And then we go from the house of God.
Appudu devuni intunnu manavellam.
And we want to apply this truth into our lives.
Ee satyani mana jivitalo mananavainchkolana.
And what is the application part now?
Ipudu mananavainchkolasa.
Brothers and sisters, you and I would bring people to the Lord.
Sahodarda sahodari, niyuvini, manamo, prajalano krissiyodukutevali.
We bring blind people to the Lord.
Guduvani krissichendukutevali.
People who are spiritually blind.
Atmyanga guduvaru.
Why did Paul the Apostle have to pray for Ephesians?
Mari Ephesilo onnavarikoraku paulu, indukani, yemanipraradinchadu.
Come with me to the Book of Philippians for a moment, keeping your finger in Mark chapter eight.
Markus swarthainimidavadya alage bittichoodandi, filippila krastapatrika.
Look at Ephesians chapter one.
Chaminchal, Ephesila krastapatrika madhadi adhyayam.
You know, these are saints.
Veelanda parashuddhalu.
That means they are believers.
Valu vishvasalu.
That is known to us from verse one itself.
Ephesio okadi okadlo adi manaku spashthamavutundi.
So if you have a question, how do we know that they are saints?
Var parashuddhalani manakelaadu elisu.
The scripture itself says that they are saints.
Vakyamenselivistundu varu parashuddhalani.
So why is Paul praying in this manner?
Aithey varikoraku yela praradistunadatano.
Look at verse eighteen.
Eni padhindavachunadu choodandi.
I pray that the eyes of your heart may be enlightened.
Manaki kalisunnaaya, aitapadihala choodandi, me manonetramalu veligimpabadi.
That means their hearts were not, they were not, they were closed, they cannot see the way they can see, their eyes were closed.
Andu varikannalu chudavalsina visyalu, chuchutaku taginavidanamlo valakannalu terovadilevu.
So Paul the Apostle is praying for the believers in Ephesians.
Andukane ikada Ephesilo onnavishvasalakorukutanupraradistu.
Let their be, let their eyes be enlightened.
Antunaduka da me manonetralu veliginchabadali, brother krissu mahima ayishwaraanamirchudali.
Brothers and sisters, it should be our prayer, isn't it?
Mana praradana kuda ide ayundali.
When I pray for myself.
Na korakunimpraradinchunappudu.
When I pray for our, when we pray for our spouses.
Mana baharya, mana jivita bhagaswami koraku praradinchunappudu.
We need to be praying like that.
Manavala praradinchadu.
We only pray for, you know, them to be protected from accidents.
Manu endusepo kuda vari, badrata, badrata, badrata ne praradistam.
Have you ever prayed for your spouse and for your children?
Kani mana yoka jivita bhagaswami koraku, mana bidhala koraku.
Look at the kind of prayer that Paul is making here.
Paulu ikada praradistana vidhanan choodandi.
It is a good model prayer for us.
Irentho manaku okamadriyainapraradana.
Verse seventeen.
Padihedo vachnum.
Ephesians chapter one.
Ephesio okadi padhindamidi.
God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give to you the spirit of wisdom, number one.
Ikada antunaduka da, devu meeku, mari grahinchekgnanamgaligina atmanivali.
Then he says, spirit of revelation in the knowledge of Him.
Antegaadu aynan gurchna, a teliskunne visyalu, pratyakshetanugurchnattu twandi atmiyali.
Brothers and sisters, can we grow from the house of God today with this kind of determination in our hearts? I want to pray like this.
Manam kuda ilan praradachayali, aalochinakaligi, a vidamayana neerpumanakaligi, manavi chotnadi veldama.
Lot of problems are settled in your home when you pray like this.
Manu ilagu praradiste, manayoka intilo onnasamasi lenno avyasasipotai.
Because when people have the spirit of wisdom.
Indukantey choodandi, gnanamunugnana matone indina furudhimarukunapurathmonappudu.
And when people have the spirit of the knowledge of Jesus Christ.
Yesu krissanugurchna gnanamgaligina manasvarikunappudu.
You know, they want to walk in that light.
A velugulone varu nadvalanukuntaru.
And the problems in the house will be settled.
Appudi intlo onnasamasi lenno avyasipotai.
In your personal life, the struggles are gone.
Mari vektikatageethonlana samasieltiripotai.
This is the kind of prayer we need to be praying.
Abadi manavilan praradachayali.
Brothers and sisters, that is revival.
Ide ujjivamu.
When we go from the house of God with this dedication in our heart, Lord, I want this kind of spiritual life.
Manamo devu intlo ochinappudu, ikada teliskunna sangatulannabatti, drudumayina sankalpamuto, tirmananjaskunna furudhemu to, ilage ninjivistananiparitam mananukuntam, ade ujjivamu.
Let us get back to this blind man who was healed in two phases.
Choodandi ikada envidavadya imo, markus swarthalo swastatpondina guduvani.
So the incident here is an illustration.
Abadi ikada jariina ee sangatana, aad yesu prabhu okagudaharana vaadukunadu.
And we have just seen that the people brought this blind person to the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ee guduvani, prajalu, jenulu, aynayoduk thieskochadu.
They brought him to Betzaida.
Betzaida kud, dagradischchadu.
And Betzaida is located on the north shore of the sea of Galilee.
Galilee samudraaniku uttarana ee Betzaida undi.
You know, Betzaida lay immediately to the east of the outflow of the Jordan.
And yordana nadi akada, galilenu nundipravinhche, a armulo tourpavaiipu gayudundi.
So we are talking about, you know, literal sea, literal waters.
Abadi ikada, mari nijangane samudramu, neeru, nadi unnatuka mananjuste namo.
Betzaida means house of the fisher.
Mari Betzaida ante, chepala vaanivillu, leda chepala pattvaanikulungamo.
And this name is derived, its name from a chief industry.
Akada unnetu twantu okaparistramana adaranjaskoni, a pair buttinatuka mananchudavachu.
That is the place we are talking about now.
Abadi Betzaida ante alantupradeesham.
It is a historical place.
Saritrakamayina sthalamadi.
And it is a real place.
Adi nijanga unnatu twandisthalamo.
The Bible has real places, real people, that's why we believe and trust God's Word.
Devu yoka vaakyalu unnam manushulu gani varu pairu gani stalalu gani vaadu pairu gani kalpidaamlu kaavu Avi nijangaa cherithalu unnasatyamalu This Bet-Saida is about a mile or two kilometers North east of the present shore of Lake Galilee Mari Galilee samudraanga prastutamu chippabadhe pradeshani dadaapu padihena maila durunlae sthalam undhi And we are talking about that incident that took place Mari aanadu athrootajariina sangatana ipudu Bible lo manandhyani stunamo And as we see in the verse twenty-two, it was a people who brought And that motivates all of us to be part of the blessings For in the life of other people Itarla jeetalo manamu e vidanga prabhavamut supergalamo Manuk telejese sangatana ikada guddevarni prajalu kriestagirigides kocharu Then as we look into that, the way the Lord touches and heals Andega adu prabhu a vikti nela taakyaadu yela swastaparchadu chusthe Touching and laying on of hands Maru vidanga tananu mutteadu chethalu vesadu You know, the scripture teaches us That there are three occasions when hands were laid upon people Maru viktila midha chethalu epudustara anidu manan chusthe vaakyalu Moodu sandarbalaadu jarutundhi Three purposes Moodu udeshalato The first one is dedication of sacrifices to God Maru devu nikibaliyarpana lo pratishchinapudu chai pedataru Exodus chapter twenty-nine, verse ten Nirgama kaanam iruvithomide padivachinamo And also verse fifteen Padiheno vachinamo Then Leviticus chapter one, verse four Levi ogadhi nalgu vachinamo And then chapter three, verse two Alage moodu adhyaymu rendavachinamo Then comes installing of the levite to the office of a priest Andega adu levi lu varu yaajakatvamu pochaitokoruku yaajakulugavalan abishekinches samayalu Hands were laid and Chethalu valamidu pettabardai And that is in Numbers chapter eight, verse ten Sangyakaanam enemidu padilam manu vasatyan chustamo And then we see the means of blessing, to pass on the blessings, they would lay hands Andega adu oku vikti na aashiravidin chetappudu Mari teddalanundi leda aashiravidin chevikti nu ndi Varika aashiravadalu cherunatluka hula chethalu pedataru That is in Genesis chapter forty-eight, verse seventeen Adi kaanam naluvayenemidu padiheda chustunamo And also Numbers twenty-seven, verse eighteen Sangyakaanam iruvayedu padhinmedlo chustunamo And also verse twenty-three Iruvaymudlo kuda And then Deuteronomy chapter thirty-four, verse nine Deityobadeshakaanam uppa i nalgu tomidlo chustunamo The healing of this man in Bet-Saida is a miracle Ee guddevaru swastatapondudana idi ikada idoka suuchakriidoka adbu damo Interestingly, if, because we are in the study, let us notice this Or let us observe this, that Matthew and Luke omit this miracle Maru ikada aasaktigolipe sangate endande Matthi luukalu ee okka sangatana no varisvarthalo pairkunaledu And probably when we get to heaven Manu parlo kaanikellapudu We can ask Matthew and Luke Matthi maru luukani Why did you not mention about this miracle? Me ru ee swastatanugurinchu me swarthal endukurailedu What was your problem? Uddeshame endi Until then you wait Apud varukum manu aagadu Because we don't know Manu delidu Why did not, why? Val endukurailedu annadu delidu But because Mark wrote it And the Holy Spirit has given to us this writing, so we are talking about it Aite markuni devu prayrepin chadu Marku a satyani rasaadu manan dani dhyani chukundamo Now, these two phases of healing is an illustration Ikada jariinae ee swastata oku udaharana You know, there is a, what we see in these two phases is gradual healing Ikada chusthe ee swastatalo adi kramapi mirga ina tuvandu swastata kaundhi Jesus shows how the disciples in particular may come to faith Sishulainavaalu e vidanga vishvasalu lo nikaraga laro Ha sangatin ikada suuchaayega prabhu telejastunadu Now, like this blind man Ee guddevarni vali Disciples also Sishalu kuda Need to learn something here about the gradual healing Ande adi kramapi mirga yaitu undi swastata They have eyes to see but don't see Valuk kandalu unnayaka valu suuchutledu They have ears but fail to hear Valaku chavalu unnayaka ni vinadunledu But they also, they will come to the point where they will see and hear Kani okka samayavostundhi kramapi valu ee stithi keltarete Valu nishyenga chustaru nishyenga vintaru But this will not happen on their own Edi varisvanta ka jariye sangatikaadu Only the Lord is able to do that Prabhu ya a sangatin chesstaru The Lord is able to heal this blind man Ee guddevarni prabhu swastaparchadu In the same way, the Lord is able to give us that kind of seeing and hearing Alage prabhu manukukuda manun suuchunatluka vinunatluka kramapi manalni swastaparistaru His healing exemplifies the situation of the disciples Maru sishulay okka paristithini telejeste akada a swastatanu devu prabhu chesadu They move in three different stages here Val akada moodu dashallo kadalaadutunaru Non-understanding Ardhanjescukunda To misunderstanding Apardhanjesckonni And then to complete understanding Sampurnamayana avagahana chesku Are you all with me? Maru avanivintunarande We are in the Bible study Manamu vaakyaani dhyani chukundana Listen carefully Daiches vinandi This is the way the disciples' stages were mentioned about their understanding Varu yoka grahimpu yeyestai lo unnayo ikada chudandi So I'll repeat again Mali chaptano They were with non-understanding Maru valu sariga ardhanjesckoleni stithlo unnaru Then they come to misunderstanding Aatarvata ardhanjescundaru gani apardhamantae sariga ardhanjescoru And then to complete understanding Aatarvata sarayaina avagahalu nikostaru Now here we see that they have no proper understanding Ikada chusthe varik sarayaina avagahanledu Chapter, if you look into chapter eight Enemidu adhyayamo Verse twenty-one Iruvayokadu vachinamo And he was saying to them, "Do you not yet understand?" Markus vartha enemidu iruvayokadu chudandi andukayaana mirinkanu grahimpa kunara So we are dealing with a group of people who do not understand Inkano grahincheni gumpu varni ikada manan chustunamo And then we see their second stage, that is misunderstanding Aatarvata rendava abiprayam leda rendava satthai endande valu grahinstunarkani puurtiga kadu What do we see here in chapter eight, verse twenty-nine through thirty-three? Markus vartha enemidu iruvaytommedhi rendicham uppa i moodu varuke evundande Misunderstanding Valu sariga ardhanjesckolika payar Now that Jesus is talking seriously about going to the cross Silvanu gurichna tuvandu satyani ento teevrangaa Gambiranga prabhu varthom matlaadutunadu Being rejected Maru e vidanga manushu kumarudu trunikarinchamadu Going through that process of suffering Aasramalavunda velthadu And then go to the cross Silva midigvelthadu What does Peter say? Pethur evanadu I hope all of us are awake Andarugu da melkoga unnarande Okay, you are awake Mir melkoga ne unnar Okay, good. Your smile is showing that you are listening Mir navutunarande mir chustunaru mek ardo navutundani So listen carefully Daiches vinandi What did Peter say? Pethur evanadu No, 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 Lord, don't do that Prabhu alla kadu You know, he is thinking humanly Maru maanavya konamlo soostunadu sangatali The Lord is bringing out the spiritual lesson and the literal happening Prabhuemo aatmiyamayana konamlo mundujarga boye sangatalani vibaristundhi That is the gospel Adi swarthayimtu undanga If gospel did not have the sufferings Swarthasramalu lekunda unnaswartha Then that is not the gospel Adi swarthakadu Jesus had to suffer Yesu prabhu srimapundali Jesus had to go on the cross Yesu prabhu silvanekkali Otherwise, it is not the gospel Ala kakapota adi swarthakadu So what do you say now? Kabadu devandaru Did Peter understand? Pethuru sariga ardhanjescunada Did Peter understand the gospel? Swarthanu sariga grahinchada Those who are sitting on the chairs comfortably Yenakala guchunatuvandu valu You are listening? Mir vintunara Did Peter understand? Pethuru sariga grahinchada No, he did not understand Swarthanu pethuru sariga grahinchal That is the stage we are seeing Manu aastha, aasthaayi ikada chustunavo Now, brothers and sisters Sawadarlara samodirlara What is the third stage? Mudvasangat endi sthai Complete understanding Come to Samoolamayana avagahana puurti grahimpu Come to chapter fifteen Chudandi padihena adhyayamo Come to chapter fifteen Markus vartha padihena adhyayamo Verse thirty-nine, verse thirty-nine Uppa itommedhi vachinamo Markus vartha padihena uppa itommedhi Verse thirty-nine Uppa itommedhi chudandi Aynakadugaani ilchinna shetadipadya aynai ilagu pranam vidi chuchu chichi Nijamugai manushudu devu kumarudi anich cheppeno Here we see the complete understanding of the disciples Ikada maru sishul gaavchu leda shetadipadi gaavchu Maru sampurnamayana avagahalu nikostunadu So Mark wrote this and other gospel writers wrote about the sufferings of the Lord Jesus Christ Yesu prabhu sramanugurinchu marku etaralu kuda maru raser varswarthallo And they all proclaimed that this is the salvation Ide rakshana ni telejaitaku silvanu gurichna varuthanadu raseru They all proclaimed and lived for it Maru valu dani prakadincharu danukoruku brathikaru jevincharu And not only lived, but they also became martyrs Anu maru kevulam brathikindi matrimi kada swarthakuriki varu hatasakshalayaru Brothers and sisters, listen carefully Abadu priya sahodara sahodari That all of them, except for John, who wrote Revelation and Gospel All of them are martyrs Yesu prabhu sishullo maru bhaktrudene yohanutappa migta valandaru kuda varu hatasakshalayaru John also went through a lot of persecution Maru yohanu kuda ento sramavunda velledu But here we see that Mark, who wrote I mean, Peter not only was talking about the sufferings But also he was willing to die most, one of the most difficult deaths Maru ee swartharayvadaku karnameena pethuru Swarthano kapudu ardhanjesckoledu Kani tarvata enta gardhanjescunadu ante Maru a swarthakuriki binnamayana chavchavadu anukuda sidhapadadu I think this is one of the best interpretations He is doing better than me to explain. Praise the Lord. Thank you Peter was willing to die upside down Maru een chesadu ante pethuru swarthakuriki talakinduluga silva vayvadu gunchpadadu On X-shaped cross Maru ayo okka X aakaramlo unnatuvandu silva They wanted to kill him Maru ayni sampaalannukunadu But Peter said, "No, no, no, my master died in that position. I will die the upside down" Apudu pethur evanadu ante ledu ledu naa ye jumalu Naika maru master aavidanga channupadu silvalo aynamadri channupodu nee yogyuni kadu From misunderstanding, sorry, from non-understanding, they came to misunderstanding From misunderstanding, they come to full understanding Kabadu ikada chusthe varu grahimpu sthai lo chudandi mundiga eemi grahinchaledu Tarvata okka samayavochinni sangaradhjanjescunadu Tarvata okka samayavochinni valu puurtiga ardhanjescunadu swarthani That has become a great motivating factor in their lives To live only for the Lord Jesus Christ Swarthanu valu ardhanjescunatarvata enta vaalu dani korikai maru prosaishabadda Kriestukuriki varu jeetala valanke tanjayaru The teachings have inscribed their hearts in such a way That they saw a profound transformation in their life Varu jeetalo samoolamayana marpo ka rupantherapukriyavalu choodakaligaru Antaka varu frudeyam midha viklikinsabaddai As we think about these things Ee visyalu manandhyani stundanga As we meditate and as we think about the sufferings of the Lord Jesus Christ To be real in our lives, that we will also follow those steps Maru yesu kriestu prabhu varu okka sramalu Avi ilanu vo vastavikanga manunkuda Vatin manu jeetalo yergi samoolanga Vatikuriki jevinchukuriki manu prosaampondali And as we have break Manaki ochina virama unundaga Let us be in the spirit of prayer for ourselves Manukorikai praridana vaykarlo manu undam That this kind of motivation that early disciples had may be given to us in our church Ye maru prayreepana, ye maru prosaamo Ye nadipimpaidhe maru aaramalu unnatuvandu sishalu kaligundu vacharo Ade rakamayana protbalamo manukuguda prabhu ichunatuka manasangam Then we will try to understand about the introduction of Jesus to see him as Christ Aatarvata yesu prabhu ni kriestuka chuchutakurikaina a parichyani ante tarvata bhagana manan chustamo Before that happened Adi jaragamundo They needed to see an illustration like that Varu ki oku udaharana prabhu jupinchadu And as we thought about this illustration A udaharaku gurichu manu aalochistundanga There are so many people, that there could be so many people even in the church Maru sangalo kuda chalamandi unnundavachu Who need to come from non-understanding to misunderstanding And from misunderstanding, they need to come out and to have a full understanding Maru swarthanugurinchina avagahana sariga lenivalu unnundavachu asale lenivalu Valu a stithilo unnadi ardhanjescunestithi krawalai the mandilo Apardhanjescunisariga maru konchame ardhamayana stithi unnudavachu Now, that Akka nu ndi puurtiga ardhanjescunestithi krawali That was the stages that we see in the life of a disciple there Maru a sishu ni okka jeetalo kuda manu a moodu sthai lo usehamu That doesn't mean that you and I need to be staying in misunderstanding and non-understanding Ande ikada moodu sthai lo nyegavadi kachitanga pratyokkarmo Modadi sthai rendu sthai lo kodrojul unnalsindani kadu We have the whole Bible, complete revelation of God Devu gurichina paripurnamayana a vivarana bhaileparpukaligina Bible manu chethalu undhi And it is through the scriptures that you and I will come to a position Where we can have complete understanding about the gospel Kabadu lekanamalu manukunnae vaatisahayantune swarthanu manamu paripurnamaga avagahanchesko galamu So we'll come back Kabadu manuchina viramandisconni malli manu mundu bagalni dhyani chukurukostam
So let us pray After prayer, we'll have a short break, we'll have some tea As we go down, kindly finish that and when you hear the songs, kindly come up again Manamu praridancheskuntamo praridantarvata Viramalo mirkindikellte manchnilda vachu mikte gudisaru Tarvata ikada paatal vinabattasamayalu ventane miru payikraval Loving Heavenly Father, we thank you for this blessed morning session given unto us Explaining unto us the importance and the authority and the blessing of God's word to us Preemgalaparlo kuputanu udhekalamo Me swarthaa adi e vidanga devu yoka adikharumthama kivo badindo E vidanga dani me samppurnanga grahinchal Ayo okka satyalani ma mundugriskocharu mikvadanaalustotralu Thank you for this wonderful example from Mark chapter eight brought before our attention Markus vartha enemidu adhyaylo na sangatana ma mundugriskocharu mikvadanamalu Thank you for showing unto us that initially they had no understanding Then later on they misunderstood And finally, it has taken a long time for them to come into a full understanding Of what God's plan, God's purposes for each one of us Maru malo pratyokkarkurikai nu kaligunatuvandu udeshalu swarthamarmamu E vidanga varu ardhanjesckoleni stithi nu ndi Apardhanjescunestithilo nu ndi Sampurnanga ardhanjescunestithilo nikivacharo a sangatini mak telejesto vacharu Thank you for using thy servant this morning Thank you for using thy servant this morning Udhekalam idasana miru vaudukunandu ke mek vandanamalu Lord bless thy word Ni vaakyaani divinchu As we continue to meditate thy word, prepare our hearts Lord, come with full expectation, full hunger and thirst So that we may be able to come into that full understanding of the scriptures Deva amari me viramandisconto undanga ma frudyalani sidhaparichchumo Ma frudyalo aashano akali putinchumutadvara Me lekanali, me udeshali, me satyalani Me mulothuga paripurnamga grahinchutaku mak sahayincheli Pray with thanksgiving in the name of Lord and Savior Jesus Christ Ma prabhrakshukudan yesu kriestu varu namalo stutinchipraridin chvedukuntanaamuthandri Amen So kindly as you go down, the tea will be served Kindly as much as possible, don't bring the tea upstairs and drink it So drink it down itself Put the waste cups there and as you hear the songs, kindly come and take your seats Mirkindikellatla idhe tea istaru daichesir tea ni kindane tragi Maru glasses ni kindane maru vesirandi payik eva kuda tea ni tetskodu daichesi And at the same time, remember, so soon after the second session, all are requested to stay back for food and fellowship Maru rendava Bible dhyana aynitarvata eva kuda daiches velipodu Ikade manaku maru bojina samayam sahavasam unundhi Again, in the evening, we have the meeting at seven o'clock Aatarvata malli sayankalam yedinti ke manaki kudivundu So evening, we are going to start in time Maru sayankalam manamu sakalamlo praraminchkundam Probably it should close by eight thirty or so Maru enemidu enemidnarakalam muginchkodani vila There won't be any food in the evening Evening, there won't be any food fellowship Sayankalam manaki bojina sahavasam unundu So we'll be closing it early so that you can go back Kabadu manamu twarga arminchkoni maru twarga muginchkunde manu vila lo keldanik vila vutundu So remember, tomorrow morning, we start at nine thirty Repu malli udhekalamu tummidin naraki manamu ee okka pratyokku kudivan praraminchkundam So but try to come in time Kabadu daichesi sakala nikravadani ki praytnin chendani Then again, tomorrow we'll have food fellowship in the afternoon Maru repu kuda ee vidangaane manamu Bible dhyana samayam kaligundam tarvata malli bojina sahavasam unundhi Again, tomorrow evening, we gather at seven o'clock Tarvata a virama unundhi malli sayankalam yedinti ke ee rojul agani repu kuda kudivundu Sunday morning, as usual, we'll gather for worship at nine o'clock Tarvata adi varamo eda vidigatthumidigantlaki aaradana korikai ostam So we request you kindly go down and have your tea and come Abadu daichesi vannu kuda maru manuslo unchkundi Anidikhajaravani kindikellte mek ipudu tea istaru
We need to see the same way. In the same way, we need to see the same way. 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 In the second session, we need to see the same way. We need to see the same way. We need to see the same way. Amen.
Shall we sing song number three? Part of Sankeya Mudo. Part of Sankeya Mudo. Sheetz.
We need to sing the song Sheetz. My brother can sing the song.
Part of Sankeya Mudo. (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. My dear Jesus, I am always singing. My dear Jesus, I am always singing. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. I have a lot of sorrow, but I am not afraid. I have a lot of sorrow, but I am not afraid. I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing.
We need to sing the same line. A little bit.
(Singing) I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing.
We need to sing the same line.
(Singing) I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God.
We need to sing the same line.
(Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. (Singing) I am a brother of God. 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 (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. (Singing) I am a brother of God. 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 (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. (Singing) I am a brother of God. 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 (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. (Singing) My dear Jesus, I am always singing. (Singing) My dear Jesus, I am always singing.[1503.76][1503.79][S02. (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing.[1513.44][1513.47][S02. (Singing) In the world, my goodness, I am always singing. Shall we pray?
Pray with thanksgiving.
Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful Lord for all the provisions that you have made for our bodies and also for our spirits.
We need to see the same way.
We thank you for allowing us to have this special celebration at El Shaddai.
We need to see the same way.
Pray Father that all of us would be benefited by this.
We need to see the same way.
And we all may come closer to you and also to each other.
We need to see the same way.
Prepare us for your coming.
We need to see the same way.
As we continue to meditate your word, speak to us.
We need to see the same way.
With thanksgiving, we pray in Jesus precious and powerful name.
We need to see the same way.
By this time, you would have understood that the second, the two phases of healing is very purposeful here.
We need to see the same way.
And the purpose is.
What is the purpose?
To bring disciples to a proper understanding.
We need to see the same way.
Before Peter could understand the full gospel, he just gave the answer that you are the Christ.
We need to see the same way.
And soon after that, the Lord Jesus has to rebuke him.
We need to see the same way.
And the reason for that is. The reason for that is the lack of understanding.
We need to see the same way.
And when we look at this healing of this blind man.
We need to see the same way.
The Greek grammar shows that Jesus actually laid his hands, the grammar is very possessive there, his hands.
We need to see the same way.
And that's how the healing took place. And then looking into this, you know, concept about two-phase healing.
We need to see the same way.
It is not because there was power lacking.
We need to see the same way.
And it is not because of inadequacy.
We need to see the same way.
Or purposeful delay.
We need to see the same way.
But the reason was.
We need to see the same way.
As disciples were also in that kind of stage of non-understanding, then come to misunderstanding, the Lord is wanting them to come to a complete understanding.
We need to see the same way. Now we have.
Now we have verses twenty-seven through thirty in front of us.
We need to see the same way.
And it should alarm us when the Lord said in verse thirty that he warned them to tell no one about him.
We need to see the same way.
Have you realized that anytime?
We need to see the same way.
And if you are opening, if you are one of those people, believers, who tried to open the Bible all of a sudden and put their finger and say that, you know, this scripture is for me, you are in danger if your finger falls on this particular words.
We need to see the same way. We need to see the same way. We need to see the same way.
You are in danger.
We need to see the same way.
You know, how about people opening the Bible?
We need to see the same way.
And put your finger there.
And put your finger there
Marie, ekkada, kalamuskoni, velvita
And the word says Judas hanged himself
Marakkada, velvita, kana, juseda, yuvaakyamandandi, yuda, veli, tanu, tanu, urivaiskoni, vandhi
Then you will say, oh, this is not for me
Apur, manu, anukunta, amma, idena, koragadu
Then you turn some more pages
Malinkede, page, dipthamu
Again, your finger falls there
Malidani, marip, velvita
And there you will see
Akkada, vaakyamuntundi
Whatever you are thinking, do fast
Neve, chedalshnavadani, ventane, cheyimo
Now you are in more danger
Ipindinka, pramadam
So don't use this wrong practices
Kaavati, bible chadive, dani, kalu muskoni, velvita, padde, kaadu
So we are going to look into little, small things about how we can really study and get the right interpretation from the scripture
Kaavati, bible, nee vidanga, manamo, marichina, china, vishyalu, guda, pogotukunku, dasarigga, vaatni, grahinchavadu, manan chuddam
But before that, verses twenty-seven through verse thirty
Iro, eendundi, muppayavuruk juseda
He will look into three components to make us understand this passage
Ivaakyabaga, naradinyeskodani, kindhalo, moorbaga, vandhi
First of all, we see existing information
Mundaga, nemo
The knowledge that disciples had
Mundaga, varu, kunnasamacharam, eemiti
That was existing in their minds
Appadike, varu, manasilo, vanna samacharam
Secondly
Rendodi
Exposing disciples' lack of information
Marie, varu, kunnasamacharam, sariyindi, kaadu, sampurnam, vandhi, kaadani, dani, varu, kete, lejeyedam
Bible, you know, openly says, if they are not having certain information correctly, the bible would say
Maribible, elan, elan, bible, manaku, vandhi, manamo, kali, vandhi, sariyindi, kaadu, varu, guda, nikkachya, kandinchedi
And the third component is
Mura, sangati
Entriting, that is, you know, entering to hold on to that information
Manaku, teliskunnasatyaani, manamo, amari, dani, gattiyakka, chayapattali
Now, what are people thinking about me? That was the question
Madatika, juseda, prajal, nagurich, yavankuntunnaru, annadigadu, prabhu
Then the answer came
Jawab, eemochindi
Some have thought John the Baptist
Kondan, neenu, jusi, neve, baptism, yohan, anukuntunnaru
Some thought Elijah
Kondan, neenu, elia, anukuntunnaru
And others thought your prophet
Kondan, yemo, neenu, pravaktallo, vokan, anukuntunnaru
You know, these are all big people and big names
Ivilanta, guda, pitta, pitta, valu
Probably, you know, they, disciples also thought that Jesus would be very happy because he is, you know, he is being identified with all the great men
Marie, adanta, prajal, anukuntunnaru, Yesu prabhu, vili, yepinappudu, shishil, anukununtaru, pitta, pitta, valu, elia, maribaptism, yohan, and pitta, ho, da, kada, vali, la, anukuntunnaru, vini, prabhu, santosha, padadu, anukuntunnaru
There was so much of lack of understanding among the people there because they were thinking wrongly about Jesus Christ
Kanavastavani, adi, yentho, vicharam, vandhi, kante, aynu, gurchi, sariyaina, avagahalo, prajal, lero
He is not what people wanted to think and the lord is bringing them to the stage where they will understand what, who Jesus Christ is
Kaavati, prajal, yavankuntunnaru, anna, kaadu, gani, nijanga, Yesu prabhu, ta, nee, mai, ta, yunnaaru, a satyaani, vili, eragala, prabhu, koradu
The disciples are yet to see Jesus in clarity
Marikrishtunu, and Yesu prabhu, ni, spashthamga, inkachu, deva, valsina, usramundi, shishilaku
They are, you know, the lord was bringing them to see him with clarity
Kaavati, spashthanga, varu, aynu, chuchinatlu, varu, nadupistunnadu
How they can see this?
Ela, chudakalu
Luke chapter twenty-four
Luca, iro, vina, luku, churandi
Verse twenty-five to twenty-seven
Iro, vina, iro, veyedu
There are two disciples here walking
Ikkada, shishilu, nadustunnadu
And We know one name, but we don't know the other name
Andalo, okar, peer, manu, vilesu, marokar, peer, guda, deli
And, you know, the lord comes in their midst
Varu, velthu, undanga, prabhuvar, madhul, vuchadu
Then, what's in twenty-seven, it says
Iro, veyedu, juseda
Then, beginning with Moses and with all the prophets, he explained to them the things concerning himself in all the scripture
Moshe, yu, samastapravaktalu, muddalukoni, lekanamalani, italo, tanu, gurchna, vachnamalabhaavamu, varu, kitheli, pino
So brothers and sisters, how do we get a full, complete understanding about the gospel?
Kaavati, swarth, yoka, paripurnamana, bhaavamu, manu, ipdaranjyeskogalmo
It's very clear that it is from the scriptures that we understand
Marikidindas, spashthanga, vandhi, lekanamala, dvaraani, adi, sadhyamo
So to understand the scripture
Kaavati, lekanali, manu, ardhinjyeskodani
That was written during sixteen-hundred-year period
Da, dapu, padaharu, vandala, samatsrala, kalu, raibadina, lekanam
Forty different people
Vedi, vedi, prajalu
And there were so many terrible attacks on the bible
Maribible, me, da, yentho, goramaina, marie, akramanal, jaregai
There was one French infidel who said that after my death, fifty years after my death, bible will be gone into history
Yendaro, dani, daadi, yesar, French, deeshan, kichendina, yoka, avishwasi, yavannarande, nee, janupayinu, yavayenla, varu, kassalu, Christavatthu, vandhi, vandhi, bible, vandhi, annadu
And you know what happened?
Kanen, jarekindi
That man went into the history
Maria, a vektin, nijanga, chadupayadu, chedtrul, galisayadu
Bible society took his house
Maribible society, varu, a vektin, intindiskunar
And they began to, you know, pile the house with so many bibles
Maria, bible society, varu, a intindiskoni, varu, bible, stop, betukodanika, illamta, bible, tonimpar
So the bible will never go into the history, it is alive even for today
Bible, kala, garba, loka, lisipoyedhi, kaadu, adi, inadi, guda, sajyamayindi
So how do we understand the bible?
Kaavati, bible, manu, vela, ardhinjyeskoli
Different people writing at different times
Marie, vedi, vedi, prajalu, vedi, vedi, kalu, vandhi, rasaaru
Kings have written
Rajalu, rasaaru
Fishermen have written
Jalalu, rasaaru
And prime minister has written
Mantalu, rasaaru
You know, all kinds of different people
Rakrakala, prajalu, vaakyani, rasaaru
And the, in the, the genre is so different The style of writing is so different
Yohanu, rase, vidhanam, vairagavandi
No, no The style of writing is so different
Varu, rase, rachina, shaili, vedi, vedi, vairagavandi
How do you understand?
Kaavati, shaili, manu, vela, ardhinjyeskoli
The song of Solomon will be so different from other prophetical books
Udaharanaki, paramukita, nishudandi, adi, vedi, grandala, to, juseda, bindanga, vandhi
And book of revelation is so different from other books
Alage, prakranakrandan, juseda, dan, shaili, vairagavandi
Book of psalm is different from book of prophets
Marikirtanakrandamo, saametalu, rendu, vedi, vairagavandhi
But god has given to us his divine word
Aite, devu, tanad, devikamaina, vaakyani, manu, kichadu
And the psalm is says, in Psalm one-hundred-and-nineteen, verse eighty-nine, thy word, O lord, is settled in heaven forever
Nota, pandam, kirtanlo, kirtanakaradu, vandhi, kada, devani, vaakyam, nityam, paralokunlo, aakashamla, vandhi, vandhi
Verse eighty-nine
Na, yenabaitomidavachinul
This word will remain for eternity
Kaavati, nityam, vandhi, vaakyam
So, how can we understand?
Kaavati, vaakyani, la, ardhinjyeskoli
First of all
Mundga
Do a proper observation
Vaakyani, jagarataga, gamaninchali
Observation of what?
Deen, gamaninchali
The words, for example
Akkada, vanna, va, av, padali, ardhinjyeskoli
When you are reading, looking into the words, you have to see whether these words are literal or figurative
Marie, akkada, vanna, raibadu, puda, padali, endugu, vaadari, aksarala, ide, ardontho, rasaaru
So please
Eda, ina, alankaran, rasaaru
Please understand carefully
Jagaratagrahinchandi
There are lot of things in the bible that are figurative
Maribible, chala, mottu, sangatlu, avi, soochina, prayanga, yoka, sanketala, raibadadi
They are not literal
Vaatni, manamo, aksarala, kadi
But there are lot of things that are literal in the scripture
Marivaakyanlo, konnunna, avi, aksarala, alage, rishkali
For example, the lord created the universe and in certain days and six days, he created, that is all literal interpretation
Udaharanaka, adikanda, madadadi, juseda, devu, madadidinamana, sushtu, yendjeseedu, rendodi, vandhi, avi, aksarala, okadinamalo, rendodi, vandhi, ala, ala, jaregai
You cannot say that that is figurative language
Kaavati, okadinamante, okadinamu, deenito, samaanam, eemo, ani, manu, dharu, uhinshkodu
You cannot say that, you cannot say that it is metaphor
Marade, yedoka, alankaran, rasaaru, manu, kovadu
And also in Greek, Hebrew and Aramaic, there was grammar
Marikriku, Aramaika, Hebrew baashalo, varu, yoka, vyakar, valakundi
So we need to understand
Kaavati, dan, guda, manu, ardhin, grahinchali
If there are certain conjunctions that come in between the verses, that means there is some connection with the previous verse
Marie, vaakyam, madhul, vyakar, vinyogi, chival, eda, ina, chepinappudu, dan, guda, ardhinjyeskundu, so, vayne, jeppe, du, kinde, vandhi, vandhi, chudali
So we are trying to understand god's word in the context
Kaavati, devu, vaakyani, manamo, a sandarbani, drushlo, betukonsa, devali
Don't isolate the scripture and try to understand it separately
Marivaakyani, edo, akkanundi, baidi, jisi, me, kunachinatlu, manakunachinatlu, manu, dani, vairagavandhi
For example, in the book of acts
Udaharanaka, apostol, karamalu
They went house to house, breaking the bread
Varu, intindiki, veli, rotabirustavacharu
Now, if you take that particular words out of the context
Maria, vaakyani, manamo, sandarbani, baidi, jisi, gamaninchadi
You will say that there is no cup and wine, so we only have to take bread
Marakkada, rotabirustavacharu, vandhi, and dan, vadi, juseda, draksha, rasaamu, manu, di, akkada, balu, vandhodu, anukundu
So you are building up a doctrine around that
Kaavati, avidanga, akkada, vandhi, jisi, dan, yoka, siddhantanga, manu, tayariyastunnu
That is the wrong understanding
Adi, tapu
So you need to understand in its context
Kaavati, ye, sandarbunlo, ye, udeshamto, vandhi, vandhi, akkada
So observing the words
A padali, gamaninchali
Observing whether it is literal or figurative
Raibadu, vaakyala, padalu, aksarapaddanga, manu, chudala, sandarbani, vadi, chudala
What is the context?
Akkada, vandhi, udesham, vandhi, sandarbam, vandhi
And when you think of the context, you are thinking of, about near context and the larger context
Akkada, sandarbam, vandhappudu, maria, a samakshal, vanna, sandarbam, vandhi, dan, paranga, akkada, vandhi, marie, saampradayan, vadi, vanna, sandarbam, vandhi
For example, if the lord has not done the healing instantaneously
Udaharanaka, ikkada, vanna, part, na, prabhu, swasthata, chesi, chesi, vandhakapote
And people come to you and say that Jesus was lacking power, that's why, there was no instantaneous healing
Apur, e vandharu, janelu, aynu, shakti, sarpoledu, kaavati, ventane, a vekt, bhagu, galedu
And you should say to them, that is a wrong interpretation
Apur, manu, chappakal, gal, kaadandi, adi, sariyaina, marivakyanangadu
But you have to be, you know, having facts to prove your position
Aite, manu, anuk, manu, chaptunna, di, nijame, vallak, telisadatlu, ruzul, vandhi
So that's where we'll see near context and, and larger context
Kaavati, ilan, vishyalu, kooraki, akkada, vanna, sa, samakshal, vanna, sandarbam, vandhi, a tadupari, venakam, vandhi, vanna, sandarbam, vandhi
In this context, we see that Jesus would never be lacking power
Marisandarbunlo, manu, gudrayinchali, Yesu prabu, kii, shakti, takkva, kassalu, kaadu
Because god doesn't lack power
Endu, kante, devu, shakti, hinu, kaadu
So we need to be proving from the scripture itself
Kaavati, lekanal, vandhi, manu, dani, ruzu, chayali
So first of all, observation is important
Kaavati, vaakyajadu, puda, mundga, manu, gamanistu, vandali
Secondly
Rendodi
Interpretation is important
Maria, vaakyani, manu, vich, vyakyanam, vandhi
Now, how do you interpret that?
Vaakyani, manu, vela, ardhinjepali
Because something is written way back during the time of Moses
Yepudu, moshe, kalu, raibadu, sangati
Now you look into the historical background of that
Marapur, acharitraka, paranga, vandhi, vandhi, a sandarbani, chudali
Wanting to make a bridge to today's time
Maria, appud, jarekinasangatlu, ippidi, kala, vandhi, e vidanga, anusandhan, jastunnu
And there is a cultural background
Maria, akkada, varu, kunnasampradayan, vandhi
So trying to understand
Dan, manu, ardhinjyeskoli
And bring the truth to today's world
Avidanga, a satyalani, net, kala, vandhi, anukunanga, manu, chappali
What is the timeless principle? What is the timeless truth that god is speaking to us?
Maria, a nadu, a kalu, a vekt, dvara, adi, jareede, adi, e nadu, manu, e vidanga, upayoga, mani, devu, rati, pettadu
Moses taught about the sacrifices being brought to the temple
Moshe, maria, devu, mandrani, balearpala, deva, vallan, neerpinchadi
And if you want to obey the same thing
Okal, adi, nijanga, manu, loba, vandhi
You will see lot of goats and sheep in front of Elshadaai
Apur, e nje, stamo, manachachim, vandhi, vuda, yeno, goramekal, vandhi, inka, baita
And slowly, you want to bring some cows also
Marinka, chappal, vandhi, koodal, doodal, vada, vada, inka
And there will be lot of community problems
Inka, apur, samajal, vandhi, gop, alakal, vandhi, vandhi
So you need to understand the context
Kaavati, akkada, balu, avi, manu, e vidanga, ipd, manu, ardhinjyeskoli
What is the timeless principle? What is the timeless truth that I learned?
A nadu, varu, chepina, sangati, kala, tithanga, e vilav, neerchkodani, na, upayoga, vandhi
And in a short time like this, we cannot understand, but you know, we can at least make an attempt, go home and try to dig out these truths and try to understand
Ivan, ne, guda, edo, okaputa, okagand, ekkada, manu, guchu, neerchkol, gani, inti, kelli, manu, vekt, vandhanga, guchu, ali, vaakyani, lothu, tava, ali, vaat, ardhinjyeskoli
And thirdly
Mura, vidi
Application
Marie, e vidanga, manu, anoyinshkoli
You are doing an observation
Manu, mundga, gamaninchali
You are doing a proper interpretation
Taravata, sariyaina, vyakyanan, dani, kibali
If you do not apply that truth in your life
Vyakyanan, jasin, taravata, satyaani, manamo, anoyinshkukapote
That is not going to help
Adi, maatru, upayoga, vandhi
Bible is a practical book for all ages, for every nation, for every generation
Anni, deeshalaki, anni, taralaki, anni, vaisal, varu, ki, avalambinchadu, vila, vina, maruka, abhyasimpatag, grandamo, bible
So we have just seen from Luke twenty-four, that it is the scriptures that will reveal about Jesus, so we go to the scriptures to understand about the gospel
Luca, swarthi, vina, luku, dhyan, manan, juseda, vandhi, lekanamalone, krishtunu, gurchna, marma, manu, teliskogal, vandhi, a, varu, manu, bail, parpundi
Peter is talking on behalf of disciples
Kaavati, shishil, pakshanga, pethuru, matladu, vandhi
And he's saying that you are the Christ
Neve, krishtu, annadu
Now, Christ is Messiah in Hebrew
Marikrishtu, and Hebrew baashalo, Messiah
And the Messiah is used in the Old Testament for Christ
Pathani bandhala, krishtunu, udeshinchi, Messiah, ne, padam, vaad
This means anointed
And, abhishekam, pandinavadu
And that is how actually Mark begins, as we read in chapter one, verse one
Mark swarth, armon, krishtunu, gurinchina, prastav, vandhi
He was giving a full, proper, you know, explanation about the gospel here
Swarthanu, gurinchii, sariyaina, paripurnamana, viveranistunnu
The beginning of the gospel of Jesus Christ, the son of God
Devu, kumar, Yesu, krishtu, swarta, prarambo
He uses both the name and the title
Marie, Yesu prabhu, yoka, peer, vini, Yesu
Jesus Messiah
Alage, aynu, kunnna, birudu, abhishtudu
Jesus is the Christ of the Old Testament
Yesu prabhuve, pathani bandhunlo, chappavada, abhishtudu, krishtu
And then, what Jesus does here is
Ikkada, Yesu prabhu, eemjesaru
He entreats the disciples to hold on that information and not proclaim it
And, vandhi, kada, me, kudelisina, i satyaani, me, daggre, dan, attu, betukundi, dan, everki, bodi, prakadinchikandi
Why?
Endu, kani
Are these disciples disqualified to preach? Because every disciple is supposed to be preaching the gospel
Mariswarta, prakadinchuda, shishuniki, nishiddama, prati, shishu, guda, prakadinchali, kada
Now, here is the reason
Aite, ikkada, kharan, churandi
They did not understand the rejection of the lord Jesus Christ
Yesu prabhu, trunikarinchabadutadu, anna, satyaan, varu, grahinchile, kappayadu
That he would go through the suffering
Aynu, himsa, pandutadu, vandhi, varu, grahinchile
And that he will die on the cross
Silavalo, chani, potadu, vandhi, varu, namle, kappodan
That understanding is missing in the minds of the disciples
Varu, krishtu, vandhi, vandhi, venakal, vanna, asal, satyalu, varu, kijiranga, vandhi
Brothers and sisters, if we have such people today in the world
Alant, varu, manam, vandhi, vud, vandhi
In your home
Manilal, vandhi
In your, among your relatives
Manabandhul, vandhi, vandhi
You know what I do?
Neen jestanadelsa.
I will pray like this.
Neenila praradistanu.
I pray for one person every day, wherever I am.
Neen ekkada unna kodaka vikti gurinchila praradistanu.
And this is my part of my prayer for that person.
Eeentanda praradana.
Lord, take care with that intimidation from him.
Mar aayal unnatvanta mahamadandisi.
That feeling of humiliation.
Mar ayukka avamanaanu gurchna bhavadeseni.
By understanding the whole meaning of the gospel.
Mar i swartanu gurchna, aavagahana purthiga tanak tellijeni.
You know, lot of people are intimidated.
Chala manikum mahamadam.
And they are intimidated because they are fearful of losing certain things.
Mar ande anna fogotukuntamemo, ani okalant bhemo.
Prestige issue.
Mar i lekaputte paru pratishtalankunna.
Status quo. Their position.
Mari var lastipastulena botha emunani.
Their fear of losing certain things.
Eevanna fogotukavasastadu manu bhayapadataru.
Oh, they may, they may call me names in my college.
Mar i neenila unnanandelliste, nanu perulbe tekristaremo.
In my office, I may lose my prestige.
Mar i okavela neenu, panjesechota varu delisse varu nanne manatina chupujustaremo.
But think about Daniel.
Kani Daniel gurichu rendi.
He lived an undefiled life.
Mar i atan e maatrano apavitra tamu khaani jivithunjivinchali.
Daniel, chapter one, verse eight.
Chudandi, Daniel ogadiyam idilo.
Why? Because of his commitment.
Endukantide tanala sankalpinchkunnadu.
Daniel, chapter one, verse eight.
Ogadiyam idi Daniel gurandamalo.
Undefiled testimony.
Ee maatrano vudapavitra mukhaanatvanti nikka chena sakshamo.
When you see certain people.
Mar konder mananjusnapudu.
In the church.
Sangamalo.
In the home.
Inlallo.
You start praying.
Praradinchali.
Lord, let this person have an undefiled testimony.
Prabu, i vikti ke maatramu machaleni sakshamibu.
He's a believer.
Vishvasi.
But he is having certain fears.
Kani konni bhayalunnae.
In his office, he's a big man.
Mar i office lo chala pete vikti itano.
And he doesn't want to lose his name.
Kaavati apervotundem manu bhayapadunnadu.
So Lord, help him in this manner.
Prabu, i vishnala tanik sahayinchai mo.
Instead of criticizing.
Mar atani manamu nindinjikande.
Instead of gossiping.
Atani gurinchima manamu, mar chavulukuruke kande.
Start praying.
Praradinchali.
And pray regularly.
Mar i kravandappa kunda praradinchali.
And that is called the discipline.
Deenne krmasikshinanta.
And when we think of the sufferings of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Yesu prabu shremalangurichima manam ardhinjaskunadu.
No, we want to make that part of our lives.
Abhi manajidalo baganga mananjeskuntamu.
And that he went all the way to die.
Aayna chani pothukuruke veladu.
Like a criminal.
Okka neragadainatu.
He went through rejection.
Mar trunikarinchabadadu.
You know, what happens to you and me.
Ni kunak enjarutundhi.
When we face rejections on this earth.
Evanunna manali, mar ikonchamo pakalubedhte trunikariste.
And constantly, this can be experience of any believer.
Mar viswasa laku kachitanga eedoka samayalo pratisaraavutunnu.
There can be constant threats of rejection for you.
Mar manali kavani nirlakshamujesewaykari.
But this truth, when it penetrates our heart, we are, we have a profound transformation in our lives.
Prabune varu trunikarincharkadaan, manupreetha grahistamo, manatrunikaramalu manaku okachintaga undavu.
Now, this will take us to the third aspect.
Ipudu mudavasangatikostae.
That is the instruction about following Jesus that refers to cross.
Kriestunu vembadinchutalo unnatvanti suuchana, anta silvanu elavembadinchali.
Now, we are in verses thirty-one through thirty-eight.
Muppa yekadunde muppa yamidi.
Now, this instruction involves suffering.
Ie suuchanalo, iyoka marisangatalo mananjusste, shremanugurichima matladunnadu.
Now, we don't want that, isn't it?
Manak shremaladu.
In our job description.
Manayoka maru ujjoga vibhralo.
We don't want to hear any kind of sufferings.
Manvillanti shremalangurichipairkunamu.
You know, and the last statement talks about your pay scale.
Mar i achivarga manamu, mana jita pathyalugurinchira matladanbu.
And we like that very much.
Adhi manak enta ishtamo.
But before that, if you have to spend so many hours.
Kana jita mkanthi payinamirila undali lajalyan.
You are called for night shifts.
Mar miiku night shift sundai.
And you are called for extra hours.
Lekaputte meero overtime jialsundavachu.
You know, we don't want all of that.
Ilantivannisuchanlo manak nachavu.
We want easy life.
Manaki ento marisukanga unna jivitham kaval.
In the Christian life, sufferings is not an exemption.
Sumanaki shremaladapichkuntamantakudarudu.
Sufferings are not option.
Mar i shremalu nakavala vada, na aashanamatteltharantakudarudu.
This is something, brothers and sisters, you and I have to learn right at the beginning of our Christian experience.
Manak ristavajivita armonlonne, shremalu manakuntayanna suuchanam manakudhi.
Sufferings are not optional.
Kaavati Christavani kisremalanevi ensukunte, ensukuntanani empikal kaadu.
Take it as part of your life.
Manajidalo baganga manaswekarinchali.
How long?
Yippadvarugu?
Until the end.
Maranam varu, anapukipu varu.
Until we see the Lord Jesus.
Prabune chuchuparyantamo.
Our sufferings will be there.
Manak thodraavachu.
And we need to go on with this as our lifestyle.
Vaatithone, vaat madhelone manam mundukelali.
So the Lord teaches disciples about his suffering.
Kaavati shremalangurinchisishutato prabu matladunnadu.
And again, that is how the gospel begins in chapter one, verse one.
A vidangaane, mar i swarta nedhi, modadadiyam modadu vachinalo praramam enti.
That is, that is the gospel.
Adhi swarta prarambo.
The gospel is not asking Lord Jesus to come into our hearts.
Mar i swarta ante yesu prabuana puttendinigra, ananidu.
And then we'll say that we are going to heaven.
A tarvata, neen adigana abadi parlokambhotano.
Gospel is very comprehensive.
Mar i swarta nedhi ardhinjaskoana chala unna sangati.
Gospel also includes rejection, suffering.
Swartalo manaki trunikaramalundai, shremalundai, nindalundai.
In Mark, chapter one.
Markus swartokadlo.
Verse fifteen.
Padeheno adhyayamlo.
The time is fulfilled and the kingdom of God is at hand, repent and believe in the gospel.
Kaalam sampurnumayunnaadi, devu raajamasamipinchiyunnaadi.
And then.
Mar manasupandi swartanu nammudi.
Now, as we go into the pages of the gospel here.
Mar ikkadi yokaswarta page lo gunnamanam velinappudu.
The meaning and the message of the gospel is expounded.
Mar i swarta iyoka bhavam ento, okokasangatanlo vibhrenchabadutuvachidi.
And here in chapter eight, it is so well explained.
Iyamidu adhyayalu inkasakka vibhrenchabadindi.
Paul talks about it as we saw in the first session, chapter fifteen, first Corinthians, verses one, two, three.
Madadukorindi, padeheno adhyayi, madadu vachinallo, paul e vidanga, abhi tannitni krodi karinchira, saedhavak mananjusam.
The gospel points out to the sufferings of rejection.
Kaavati swartalo kachitanga, shremalundai, trunikaram untundi.
Pain.
Aayasamno opi untundi.
Death on the cross.
Mar i silva maranam untundi.
And the resurrection.
Aite punaruddhanam kuda untundi.
Paul the apostle expounds this truth in Romans, chapter six.
Roma arvadhyayamlo ivannikuda paul chakka vibhristadu.
When he's talking about the death.
Mar aayna maranamu.
Burial.
Aayna boostapana.
And resurrection.
Aayna punaruddhanamu.
He so clearly explains to believers.
Vishvasalakentochakka akadu vibhrenchedu.
We need to study that.
Avannam manandhyaninchali.
In verse thirty-two, it says.
Mupparindu vachinallo chudandi, markyam idilo.
Mark eight, thirty-two.
Markyam idi mupparindu lo.
The suffering, rejection, death and resurrection of the Son of Man, through those shocking and offensive, are the essential content in the Jesus messianic identity.
Mar i yesu kriestu prabu varuko gurthimpulo, swekarinchutaku manakanta nachina nachakupoyina, shremalu, himsa, ninda, silva nedhi, kachitamo, adhi aayaloka antarbahaamayna gurthimpulo.
And how did he speak on these things?
Di vittin gurinchii, elamatladadanta mupparindu.
If you look into the scripture, it says, he talked plainly.
Aayna i maata, bahirangamga chepeno.
Verse thirty-two.
Mupparindu.
And he was stating the matter plainly.
Aaynanto bahiranganga suitiga chepadu.
It is, it is nothing hidden there.
Akademi daachpet chappaladu.
He wanted people to know and understand.
Mar aayna prajal telliskovalani, grahinchalani koradu.
The instruction and suffering of the cross.
Kaavati silva shremalangurinchinadu vanti suuchana.
Involves a rebuke.
Andalo gatimpundi.
Peter was thinking humanly.
Pethuru manavkono lo justunnadu.
But the Lord was talking about the eternal plan of salvation through the gospel.
Nityamaina rakshana sankalpaanugurinchiprabu matladu.
So Jesus rebuked Peter.
Abadi prabu, pethuru gatinchadu.
The Greek word here that is used.
Greek bhaashalo akadu eem padam vaadharante.
Is customarily used for rebuking demons.
Mar i dayaalana gatinchutappudu e maata ita vaadtaru, a maata pethuru vishame vaadharu.
That is the rebuke that the Lord used here for Peter.
Pethuru vishame a gatimpanu vaadharu.
Then we come to the actual instruction of Jesus.
A tarvata jusste inkasalu suuchanalo.
Then when he is talking about the taking up the cross and following him.
Silvanu ettkoni vembadinchuta.
Now, please look into verse thirty-five.
Muppa yidu chudandi, jesi.
The first one.
Madadidi.
Whoever wishes to save his life will lose it.
Tana pranamunu rakshinchukona guru vaadu, danipoguttukununu.
Now, here is people, when they are so much intimidated, they want to preserve their lives.
Mar ikkadi chudandi prajalu, varu pranali kaapadukovalanare du, aashala unnaru.
They want to keep their prestige issue.
Var iyoka paru pratishtal kaapadukovalanunnaru.
But the gospel will include like this.
Kani swarta evanundante.
If you want to follow the Lord Jesus.
Neuvprabunu vembadistawa.
Now, this is the plan for you.
Aite idugoni korakena pranali.
This is the job description for you for the rest of your life.
Ne jivithamantana uche valsana, ne pani vibharna ide.
Not during the beginning years of Christian life.
Eedo christavajivita armonlonne jesi tarvata.
But as you, as you keep growing in Jesus.
Lu kriestu lo edigya kodhi.
You are becoming more mature and mature.
Nu inkai inkai paripakkvata sadistun.
And you are becoming more and more mature.
Nu inkai, mar into paripakkvata galinatuvadi.
Then the lifestyle is this.
Niyoka jivita vidhanam elavuntundi.
Secondly.
Randhodi.
Whoever loses his life for my sake and the gospel will save it.
Na nimittamuno swarta nimittamuno, tana pranam poguttukunuvadu, danirakshinchukununu.
Verse thirty-five.
Muppa yidu.
Then the third one.
Murodi.
Verse thirty-six.
Muppa yaru.
For what does it profit a man? You know, there is a trading issue that the Lord brings.
Ikka chudandi, okka vyapara sutraanugurinchimmatladunnadu prabu.
If you gain the whole world and lose your own soul.
Lokamanta sampadinchkuni, santapranam poguttukundi.
You know, when I hear on TV, this big people, you know, famous people passing away.
Mar manu varthalo TV lo, maripeta pete peruganchina viktu lo, varu chani payaru, veluparu, vinappudu.
People from Mumbai.
Mumbai lo unna peta pete varu.
And they have, their names are become so popular.
Mar varu ento perugadinchnavalu.
They have earned lots of money.
Ento dabu sampadinchnavalu.
Immediate thing that comes to my heart is this.
Mar i varu chani payarani varta vinappudu, ventane naak engrutkostunna.
Lord, where is their soul?
Ayio varu pranam boyindi, varu aatme ekkadu.
They have earned so much popularity.
Ento perug sampadinchadu.
They got so much of money.
Ento dabu sampadinchadu.
Lord, where is their soul?
Aite varu, varu aatme ekkadu.
How sad it would be.
Irentavi charam.
That eternity, we don't see them.
Mar nityatthamlo varu kanaaru.
Fourthly.
Naal godi.
What shall, what will a man give in exchange for his soul?
Manishudu tana pranamunaku pratigaya eemi yagalu gunu.
Very logical thing, isn't it?
Chudandi ento tharkikanga matladunnadu.
It is like a business-like matter.
Ikka okka vyapara sutrangamaatladunnadu.
And in Christian life, we don't take it as a business-like issue, then we are failures.
Mar i christavajivitaanu okka vyapara sutrangama manam gamaninchakupote, manam tapipotunadu.
We don't want to take Christian life as business-like.
Mar i okka vyapara vidhanamlo manan dhanalochinchakupote.
But business-like words are mentioned in the scriptures.
Vanda manav dhanivyaparanchemo, kani vyapara sutrangane matladunadikada.
We cannot be casual as a believer.
Anta viswasi gunaneevo, edo atla nirlakshanga undananta kaadu.
We cannot call a pinch, you know, is like, you know, something very soothing thing.
Mar i evanana ochi gillinappudu, idi ento manchiganaaku, sutimethaga undanam manam analim.
Pinch is a pinch.
Mar i gillinappu radhi gilladame.
It's not soothing.
Adhi mar ento mar manchigavunde sangatka.
Cross is not soothing to you and me.
Silva anedi, neeku mettanaina vishningaadu.
Yet, brothers and sisters, we are called to bear the cross.
Silvanu moitakekada manam pilobaddamo.
Fifthly, in verse thirty-eight.
En muppa yamidi.
Whoever is ashamed of me and my words, in this adulterous and sinful generation, nothing different from that world and today's world.
A naadu a prapanchanee, udeshinchiprabu anna matli, iroj vartistai, vyabicharamunu, paapamu cheyu, i tarumvarilo, nanugurchunamaat, nanugurchusigupaduvaadu evadu.
Does this study have any effect on our hearts?
Mar i iyoka dhyanamo, manafurdayalamid eemaina prabhavunjukunda.
I am taking these truths right from the scriptures.
Vaakyamlo unnde i satyalini ettabadunnadu.
I am not putting any truth into it.
Andalo na maatlu, na sati memetetle.
I read these verses in front of you.
Me mundevaakyanavutunnaanu.
And these words are the words of God.
Devu nu matli vi.
And this is the word of God.
Ide devu nu vaakjamu.
And that word, for that word, you and I are accountable.
Mar i vaakyam koruke, neenu neenu vudajavabadariga unnam.
Demanding our good stewardship.
Manu ento chakka ni gruhanirvaka thvani, anuparachali.
What we have learned today, are we good stewards?
Mar i iroj manu ennyechkunnam, nijanga, manamu okamanchi gruhanirvahakunavale nirvahistunnam.
As we come to the conclusion of this study.
Mukimpuku vastu undanga.
Are our eyes open to see the Savior?
Kriestunu chudakalukutunnam.
As one who suffered for my sins, our sins.
Na paapamalu koruke, isremapadda kriestunu neenu chustunna.
My master is rejected.
Na yajamanaudu, trunikarinchabadadu.
He went through shame.
Ninda avamanaanu gunda veladu.
He died.
Maraninchadu.
But he rose again.
Aite tirigilechedu.
How is that going to affect me today?
Idi naakela prabhavunjukuntundi.
Is that something happened two thousand years ago and doesn't have any effect in modern world?
Jarigindi, daniki ippidi prapanchanik sammanleedo, annatika anapisundha.
Don't you think that we are called to identify with the Lord Jesus?
Yesu prabu to manal manu aikke parchkovalani, aayna manal piloleeda.
Paul would say, no, I am not living myself now, I live for him.
Paul aite anta adu naamattuka ide, neenu aaynakuruke, kriesturuke jivitanu.
It's no longer I live.
Ikano jivinchuvadano neenu kano.
That is identity.
Adhi aayaloo manal manam gurthinchkodu, aikke parchkodu.
Do you have identity crisis in your office?
Niyoka office lo, nu panjesechota, neegurthimpu vishame, satamatavutunna.
In your college and in your school.
Ni college lo, ni school lo.
You don't want to go through any kind of shame.
Mar yamo yavamana ma, i nindana, i china chupa, anibhayapadunava.
Because you are a believer, because you are a Christian.
Nu christavani chepukundene, neenu china chupujustarananibhayapadunava.
Don't go from the house of God with this kind of blindness.
Mar adhi guti tanolo unnde, iroju mandranu unnde, baitukavella kudai chesi.
The Lord is healing his people.
Prabu tana prajal swastaparustunnadu.
Maybe for some time, you are not with proper understanding.
Bausa kodikala, neev sariyaina avagahana lekundavunavemo.
But you can put away all that misunderstanding today.
Aite i dinamo aapardaalu, aavagahana lenita manta pakuvete.
And then say to the Lord, if it is that shame, I want to take that shame.
Prabu tu andam, prabu, office lo gani, school lo gani, a nindane naaku, a mari avasarama, ni nindadeskuntanu.
And people brought the blind person to the Lord.
Ikka chudandi, prajalu a gutuvaani aayachentu deskuchadu.
And you and I, when we know this gospel.
Eppadai swarta.
We bring people to the Lord.
मनु येरुकुतामो सरेन विधानमलो आपुड़ मनु कुड़ा अनेकमयन गुड्डिवार नीतीस्कुरागुताम
You know we we saw the Lord's hand upon this man.
ई व्यक्ति मीदा प्रभुवे चेत्तुल्बेट्नट्वण्डा मनु
The Lord will hold you with his hand.
काबट्टी प्रभुवे तन चेत्तुलतो मुट्टुकुंडाडु
Touch you
मनली ताकुताडु
And heal you.
मनली भागुजेस्ताडु
How do I know that?
मनक एलादेलसिदी
All by faith.
अन्ता कुड़ा विश्वासम
No doubt.
अनुमानले
This is God's word.
देवनु वाक्यम
We cannot doubt his word.
मनुमा वाक्यानी अनुमानिंस्वत
And today you can be so refreshed in heart and mind.
काबट्टी ईदिनमो मनसलो फुर्देमलो इन्तो नेम्मदी इन्तो प्रशांततमनु कल्यु
Fully aware of that Lord Jesus Christ who was present during that blind man on that day is willing to help me in my situation by putting his hand upon me and healing me.
आनाडु आ गुड्डिवान्य मिदा चेत्तुले सायनी मरि रुण दशलो भागुजेसिन कृष्टे ईनाडु नी दग्र वच्चुन्नाडु आयन तन चेत्तुल नी मीदा उंची नीनु ताकुताडु
Our eyes will be opened.
मनक कालु तेवर्डाडु
Then we will know that yes he suffered for me.
आपुड़ मनुमा स्वर्थ सत्यानी चूस्ताम अवुन आयन नाकोरकेस निमपुंडाडु
Then we recognize him and proclaim
आपुड़ आयन मनु गुर्तिस्तामो
And then we'll start proclaiming him.
आपुड़ मनु आयनी प्रकटिस्तामो
Beginning from your house
इंटिनुंडी प्रकटिस्तामो
Going to your surroundings
मनचुट्टु पक्कल प्रकटिस्तामो
I am going all over.
मरि बाइट अंता कुड़ा प्रकटिस्ताम
You know you and I can be a great blessing.
नीव नीनु कुड़ा पुड़ियन्तो आशीर्वादकारणगा उंडगलमो
This man
ई व्यक्ति
Whom Jesus rebuked.
ए व्यक्तिनाइदे प्रभु गतिंचाडु
Whatever marvelous way he was used by the Lord
एन्दा गातर्वाता प्रभावतन वाड्कुन्द
Nothing could deter him to go to that cross-shaped upside down death for the sake of the Lord Jesus.
कृष्ट कोरके तलकिंदलिगा सिल्वा वेबडुटकुड़ा एदी आपले एनंतगा ई व्यक्ति माराडु
One day this Peter heard this message same message that we you and I are hearing.
इप्पुड़ मनुमिंटना ई वर्तमानमयो कानोकनाडु अलनाडु पेतुर विन्नाडु
The same things that job description that Jesus gave for a believer.
मरि विश्वासीकोरके एवाइथे उज्जोग सूचनलगा उन्नायु आवी प्रभु आनाडु चेप्पेडु
And his life was changed.
आ व्यक्ति जीवितम मारिपयिंदी
And he became fisher of men.
आपुड़ मनुष्युन बट्टे जालरगा तन माराडु
And how do we go from this blessed meeting this morning?
काबट्टी युद्ध कालम इकड़ा गुच्चुन नीव मरि वन्नी विनी वन्नी ग्रहिंचिन तर्वाता इन्तर्दी धीमनतो इकड़ुनी वेलालनुकुन्नाव
May the Lord help us.
प्रभुवे मनकु सहायिंचैनु गाक
Shall we pray?
प्रार्धन जिसकुन्दांडी
So we close just a few moments to search our hearts in the light of God's word.
देवनी वाक्य पिवेलुगुलो कोधिक्षणालो मन जीवितानी मनु परीक्षिंचुकुन
You have heard the story of the blind man
आ गुड्डिवानी कथन मनु विन्नाम
Also the life of Peter
पेतुर जीवितानी मनुमु विन्नाम
Also the purpose of Lord Jesus Christ coming to his world
येसु प्रभु ये उद्यश्यंकोरके लोकानिको चाडु विन्नाम
Also what is the true gospel?
निच्यमयना स्वर्थ अंडे एमिटो विन्नाम
And how I can be a witness of this true gospel?
ई निच्यमयना स्वर्थकु साक्षिगा मनु एलाउंडगल
The Lord has been speaking to us.
प्रभु वन्नी कुड़ा मनतो माट्लातु वच्च
Sometimes we are of no understanding.
मनुमु इन्का अर्धन जिसकुले स्थितलो उन्नाम
Sometime we are misunderstanding.
कोणिसारु अर्धन जिसकुन्डंगानी सागमय अर्धन जिसकुन्ड
There's so much of fear and also being put to shame because of our stand for Christ.
मरि प्रभु कोरकु निलबढ़ते निंदलोस्तायमो अवमानमोस्तुंदे मो चिन्नचूपु जूस्तारे मो पट्टिंस्कोरे मो अन्न एन्नो भयमो
But the real revelation is how much Christ loved me died for me and rose again for me.
आइथे निच्यमयना अवगाहन इंडंड कृष्ट नन इन्तोगा प्रेमिंची तनु मरणिंची पातिपेटबडी तिरिगिलेचाडु
That will help us to make us as real witnesses and bold witnesses of the gospel of Christ.
दान गुरिंचना अवगाहनये मनु आयन कोरके एकडे इना एलांडी भयमो आंधोलन लेकुन्दा असल इना साक्षलगा उंडटकु मनक सहायपर्तुंदी
But otherwise we will be still living a defeated life.
लेखपोते इन्का कुड़ा ओड़ीपोतुन्ना क्राइस्ट जीवितम
Without testimony without sharing the gospel
साक्षम उंडदु स्वर्थ प्रकटिंचम
We'll also be carried away by the trends that are happening around the world.
मनचुट्टु लोकललो जरुगुतुन्ना मरि संघटलतोने मनु कुड़ा कोट्कपोत
That's why to protect us God has brought his word.
अंदुकनी मनली आ प्रभावमुंडी कापाडु दानिकी प्रभु तन वाक्यानी ईदिनमनु योद्धकदेच्च
I can say a small prayer.
चिन्न प्रार्धना
Lord thank you for speaking to me.
प्रभु आना तो माट्लानंदके वन्दनमलो
I have not been going so deep in the word of God.
मरि नीनो Pardon?
I have not I have not been going so deep in the word of God.
देवानी वाक्य विष्मय नीनु लोतगा आलोचिंची ग्रहिंची गमनिंसले कुन्दा जीविस्त वच्च
He was one among those who did not understand your word.
मनी वाक्यानी सरिगा अर्धन जिसकुले व्यक्तिगा ब्रथकुत वच्च
I have been living a life of misunderstanding thy word.
मरे दो मीद मीदगा जादीबी मीद मीदगा अर्धन जिसकुनी सागम अर्धनलो आपार्धनलो जीविस्त वच्च
I have not been facing rejection for the faith and for the word of the gospel.
कृष्ट कोरकु कृष्ट स्वर्थ सत्यम कोरकु मरि अवमानम बरिंचुटकु भयपर्तु वच्च
I have been going through pain and also sorrow not understanding the gospel.
स्वर्थनु सरिगा अर्धन जिसकोलेका इन्तो बादा, इन्तो निंदा, इन्तो स्रमलु इबंदिपड़तु वच्च
Been afraid to bear the cross and even come our Lord
सिल्वानु मोसुकोनी प्रभुनु वेम्बडिंचुटकु भयमो
I had no understanding about the death of Christ on the cross.
स्कृष्ट सिल्वा मरणमु गुर्चिना असल इना मरि आ भावमु तेलियक
I have been living such a life of void of the gospel.
मरि स्वर्थ लेनट्वण्डी जीवितं उंडोने जीविस्त वच्च
Thank you for speaking to me.
आइथे नातो माट्लानंदके वन्दनमलो
I was blind to all those things.
मरि नीन कुड़ा वन्नीत विष्मय गुड्डिवाड़ीगा उंडु वच्च
I want your healing touch.
देवानी वेनानु ताकुमो
It may be one time or two times
मरि ओकसारी अवसरमयते रेंडोसारी ताक
So that I may have a fresh revelation of the gospel of Christ.
तद्वारा कृष्ट स्वर्थनु स्पष्टमगा चूच्चन
Not only about my salvation
ना रक्षण विष्मय कादु
But how to enjoy the cross of Christ in my daily life.
ना अनुदिन जीवितं उंडलो कृष्ट सिल्वानु एविदंगा आनंदिस्तु मोयवच्च
How I should proclaim the cross of Christ to others?
एविदंगा ईतलक स्वर्थमुनु प्रकटिंचवच्च
Lord please help me.
प्रभु आना की विष्मय सहायिंचै
Touch me and heal me.
ताकुमो नानु भागुचैम
If this is your prayer
इदे नी प्रार्धन इते
Then kindly show your hand and put it down.
मीरु मी ओकचेत्तने पाइकेते दिन्सवच्च
Is there anyone?
येवरैना उन्नार
Bless you sister Lord bless you sister.
सहोदरी प्रभु नीनु देविंचन
Anyone else
येवरैना ईट प्रार्धन चेइवार उन्नार
Lord bless you sister.
सहोदरी प्रभु नीनु देविंचन गाक
Lord want to make his witness for you.
प्रभु मिमलनी तनक साक्षलगा मार्चकुन
Lord bless you sister.
सहोदरी प्रभु मिमुनु देविंचन
Lord bless you brother.
सहोदरडा प्रभु मिमुनु देविंचन
Anyone else
येवरैना
You have been afraid of this gospel.
मरि स्वर्थ अंडे भयपर्तु वच्चवा
You have been ashamed of this gospel.
स्वर्थ गुरिंची मरा अवमानंगा भाविंची मोहमातंगा नामुशीगा मरि उंडु वच्च
Pay the price for the gospel.
स्वर्थ कोरके क्रायंचलिंचालंडा भयमा
That is the way kindly show your hand and we'll pray for you.
मरि इप्पुडु तीर्मानम मार्चकुन्नाट्लाइथे मी चेत्त अन्नी कोरक प्रार्ध
The Lord will help you.
प्रभु सहायिंजस्त
Give you victory.
विजयमिस्त
Lord bless you sister.
सहोदरी प्रभु मिमुनु देविंचन गाक
One more last time.
शिवरिसारिगा
Anyone else
इन्का येवरैना
Anyone else
येवरैना
May the Lord bless you sister.
प्रभु मिमुनु देविंचन गाक
Loving heavenly Father
प्रेमगला परलोकपुतन
Thank you for this wonderful way that brought people our attention, the example of the blind man.
देवा गुड्डिवान्यो कोब्रतान तन्नी मामुंदुकु दिस्कोच्चन अन्नी केन्तो वन्दनालस्तोत्रमलो
Touch him and this wonderful miracle is a reality.
देवा अतनीनु मुट्टी भागुजेस्यावीदे अद्भुतमयना वास्तवम
But so many lessons you have brought for us to learn.
मीमु नेच्कुन्नाट्लगा दानुको उदाहरणगानु पेट्टाव
The law of disciples did not understand in the beginning.
सिष्टुल दानी ग्रहिंचलेक्पयारु
They misunderstood.
दान आपार्धन जिसकुन्द
And then finally brought them into the full understanding of the purpose of God.
शिवरिगा मरि देवने को उद्यशालन बट्टी असल इना ग्रहिंपुलोनी कुवार नीतीस्कोच्च
Many of us are like that blind man.
मीमु कुड़ा गुड्डिवान्य वाले उन्नाम अनेकुलम
Lord but thank you for thy healing touch always available to us.
देवानी स्वस्तपरिचे हस्तमु एल्लपुड़ माकोरके चाचिनंदके नीक वन्दनमलो
Touch me and heal me Lord.
देवानानु कुड़ा ताकुमो भागुचै
Those who have raised their hands do a wonderful work of healing touch spiritually in their lives.
येवरैथे चैय एति वारी ओका तीर्मानं तेलयेसरो वारी कुड़ा मुट्टी स्वस्तपर
Those who prayed silently also do a deep work in their life.
येवरैथे मऊनंगाने प्रार्धिंचुकुन्डा उन्नारो वारलो कुड़ा लोत इना कार्यम जरिगिंच्च
Although the Lord rebuked Peter The Lord rebuked Peter
पेतुर नी प्रभु गतिंचाडु
But yet later on he became a challenging witness even even till the end of his life.
आइथे जीवितमु मुगिंचुकुने वारकु कुड़ा प्रभु कोरके अद्भुतमयना साक्षिगतनु तर्वातमाराडु
Lord make me and make us like Peter who can give our lives for the gospel.
नन्नो ममलनी आविदंगा पेतुर वाले स्वर्थ कोरके प्राणत्यागंचैटकैना सिद्धपड़े स्थिति के तेंड
Do not be ashamed of thy word.
नी वाक्य गुरिंची सिग्गुपड़कुना ममल चें
Be ashamed of thy testimony.
नी साक्षन गुरिंची मी सिग्गुपड़कुना सहायिंचै
Do not declare the gospel of the cross of Christ in the coming days.
कृष्ट सिल्वानु स्वर्थगा प्रकटिंचुनट्लगा माक सहायिंचैंड
Bless thy word
नी वाक्यानी देविंच
Write them in our hearts
मा फुर्देपलकलम इदा रायंडी
Our experience
वाटिनमा अनुभवंगाच्च
Let not the enemy catch up with thy word.
देवा शेत्रु एत्तुकुन्बोकुन्दा सहायिंचै
Bring with abundant fruit for your name.
मरि इन्तो विस्तारमयना फलबरतंगा चें
Yah with this prayer with thanksgiving in the blessed name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
मा प्रभुरक्षकुडने सुकृष्ट वारी दन्यकर्मन नामनलो प्रार्धिंचाडी वेडुकुन्ड नामतन
Amen
Amen.
The grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, love of God the Father, fellowship and communion of the Holy Spirit with us both now and forevermore.
Amen.
Praise the Lord, God bless you. So kindly if you go to the second floor food will be served to all of you.
मिरंद्रु कुड़ा सेकंड फ्लोर केलनाट्लाइथे मनक अकड़ा बोजनमो सिद्धपर्ष बढिंदी
And again we gather for evening meeting at seven o'clock.
बोजनम इन तर्वाता मिरे लोच्च आइथे मल्ली सायंकालम येड़गंडलकी कुड़ीकुन्ड
Seven to eight thirty will be closing.
येड़गंडलो उंडी एन मिदनारो वारकु मनु मुगिंचुकुन
Try to be here in time.
काबट्टिदाइचेसी सकालमलो रम्मनी मनु चेस्त
And tomorrow again we gather for morning at nine thirty.
रेपु उद्धेकालमो तम्मिदनारकी मनु कुड़ीकप्रारंभिंचुकुन्द
And tomorrow evening at six seven o'clock.
सायंकालम मल्ली येड़गंडलकी मरो कुड़ीकुन्द
Again we gather for worship on Sunday morning at nine o'clock.
आदिवारमो उद्धेमो तम्मिदी गंडलकी आराधनकोरके मनोस्त
So kindly come and inform and invite others also.
दाइचेसी मीरु रण्डी ईतलकुड़ा अनेकुलकु मरि आह्वानन इवंडी
So may God bless you.
प्रभु मी अंदरनी देविंचन
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
And sisters kindly help us in cleaning and washing after the